Calling to order the July regular meeting. You have our principal Tantilus Nager, the board is six oh three. The first item of the agenda is board business, the election of officers. In this case, do I need to? All right, great. The first election for officers is the position of chair. Do we have any nominations at this time?
Hi.
Thank you very much. Do we?
No seconds.
No seconds. Any other nominations for the position of chair?
I move to close the nominations for chair.
Okay, recognized. The nominations are closed. So we'll call the question of the election of the chair. Logan, would you like to review the acceptance for officer elections?
Yeah, so I'll go ahead and conduct a roll call once we close the nominations for each position. And at that time, if you could just say the last name of the member that you would like to vote for, because there's just one nomination, still ask that you just go ahead and say the name. And I will now conduct the roll call for the nomination of Member Ross for the position of chair. Baldwin. Carson.
Yay.
Sorry, if you could just say the last name of the member you'd like to vote for.
Ross.
Thank you. Char.
Ross.
Farden.
Ross.
Fujinaka. Kewanoo. Blink. Kojima. Laka Laka Monapuna. Lee. Nakamoto.
Ross.
Edo. Oh, I'm sorry. Nick Park.
Ross.
Peck. Ross. Salasa. Steel Quest.
Ross.
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 Motion passes with nine votes for Ross and no abstentions.
Thank you very much for the trust you're putting in towards me for another term. Looking forward to making it a great one. The next item is the position of vice chair. Do we have any nominations at this time? Can you do the thing for the seat?
Uh, definitely.
All right, Nathan is recognized.
I'll nominate myself, Nathan Char, for vice chair.
All right, are there any other nominations at this time? Hearing none, we'll close the nominations and go to the roll call vote.
Okay, so the, excuse me, the motion is currently to elect Member Nathan Char for the position of vice chair. Baldwin. Carson.
Char.
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 Farden.
Hi.
Fujinaka.
Yes.
All right. What it was, sorry, what did you say, Janelle?
I don't know why my camera's not working. Sorry, um, yes.
Oh, sorry, if you could just say the last name of the member you'd like to elect.
Char.
Thank you. Kewanoo. Blink. Kojima. Laka Laka Monapuna. Lee. Nakamoto.
Char.
Park.
Char.
Peck. Salasa. Steel Quest.
Char.
Ross.
Char.
Motion passes with votes with ten votes for Member Char.
We now have the option to create one or more vice, oh, sorry, a additional vice chair position. Do we have any interest in creating perhaps a second vice chair position? It's the number of years of number we've added, but also in the past, not had a second vice chair position. I see Corinne's hand going up. Bring your recognition.
I have somebody to nominate if you decide to go forward with it.
Okay.
Do you want me to say that now, or do you want to wait till you, do you have to call a vote on whether or not we're having a second chair?
Um, we don't have to call for a second chair. We can just take nominations for this, or even like a third vice chair according to the wording of the agenda. So please go ahead.
Well, I'd like to nominate Elena Farden to be the second vice chair. Because I think she'd do a really good job at it.
Okay, any additional nominations at this time? Oh, for second vice chair, yeah. Okay, so we have two candidates. We have Steel Quest and Farden.
I'd like to nominate myself for the vice chair.
Ignore your officer positions. They will have.
Yeah.
But I got you discouraged. I know you're new, so I'm just letting you know. Would you still like to keep your nomination for second vice chair?
No, I'm not saying the third, but we're not going to go that far for a second.
We're doing second right now. Okay, thank you. Okay, we have Chance Farden. You're recognized at this time.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'm honored for the nomination. It's just, I'm in my last year of my doctorate, and I, I feel like I wouldn't be able to give the position the required amount of work that would be needed. So I would like to remove my nomination, but thank you for thinking of me.
All right, thank you very much for letting us know. All right, so we have one nomination for us at this time. Oh, sorry, I can see Farden's name. Oh, you just removed it. Okay, so we have one nomination. Is there any additional nominations at this time? Hearing none, let's call the roll call vote for Steel Quest.
Yes, the current motion is for the position of second vice chair for Members John Steel Quest. Baldwin. Carson.
Steel Quest.
Char.
Steel Quest.
Farden.
Quest.
Fujinaka.
Steel Quest.
Kewanoo. Blink.
Quest.
Kojima.
Steel Quest.
Laka Laka Monapuna. Lee. Nakamoto.
Steel Quest.
Park.
Steel Quest.
Peck. Salasa. Steel Quest.
Steel Quest.
Ross.
Steel Quest.
Motion passes with eleven votes for Member Steel Quest for the position of vice chair, or second vice chair, I excuse.
I'm recognizing Member Char at this time. I noticed his face is standing. I didn't make sure I put it.
Oh, yeah, I just wanted to point out, Richard just stepped in. I don't know if he got his vote, but it, it was a pretty handy pass, so.
We have one.
I think, I think I might have already gotten passed.
If we're already run past, then we have the rules. I believe we're all about.
This is, this is Richard. I, I voted.
Oh, you did vote, Richard. I'm sorry. Did you say Steel Quest?
Oh, yes, I did.
All right, thank you very much.
Thanks for correcting the record.
Okay.
Okay, so we're going to move on to the next position, the position of secretary. Do we have any nominations at this time? Um, Baldwin, I have a phrase.
I don't have any phrase on that.
What are you playing? Would you like to make a nomination?
Yeah.
Okay, so there are no nominations for secretary at this time. Let's get another moment. So there's volunteer. It is also being voluntold. Wouldn't anyone like to nominate someone who they think would do a good job? Move on.
Yeah, if you guys don't choose to like at this time, then it'll just get to the next agenda.
It's true. Do we have, wait up? Oh, I'm ready. Actually, let's take something out of order slightly. Did you want to still make any nominations for third vice chair? Because there are additional officer positions. For third vice chair, what?
I don't know.
Okay. So we do now actually first and foremost have a nomination, and it was in order for a third vice chair position. Um, in which case, are there any additional nominations? Would you mind asking your name out loud for us? Ken Petter has nominated, has also nominated. Okay, I need discussion around the position of third vice chair. This isn't an additional position. Uh, Member Farden is recognized.
Thank you, Chair. Can you share the responsibilities and duties for the third vice chair?
Thank you very much. Currently, there are no official duties of second vice chair nor third vice chair. Later on the agenda, I have included an addendum to duties of officers, which that additionally does not have any duties assigned, but would be a good opportunity to assign duties. I recognize Member Kewanoo.
Uh, yes, I don't think we need a third vice chair. We have what? Chair? Vice chair and a second vice chair already?
Thank you very much for your contribution there. Um, I think we can call to vote then. All right, we're going to close nominations at this time. Yeah, this is the, the motion is to elect Member Peck to immediately create position of third vice chair.
Okay, I will go ahead and conduct the roll call. Baldwin. Carson.
I'm sorry, I'm having a hard time hearing. What is the person's name?
So the motion on the table is Member Lee appointed, Member Ken Peck.
Peck? Okay, I'll vote for him then. Peck.
Thank you. Char.
Peck.
Farden. Sorry, what was that, Elena?
Peck.
Thank you. Fujinaka. Was that Peck Edo?
Yes. Yes. Yes.
Kewanoo.
Excuse us, is that me, Kewanoo?
It's Kewanoo.
Yeah, I'm sorry. Did you say Kewanoo?
Yes, I said Kewanoo.
Okay, okay. You know, who, who, can I, who are we voting for and can we hear from our candidates a little bit? Is.
I did have discussion. I did have discussion. We closed the discussion in favor of.
Okay, I'm going to abstain.
Thank you. Blink. Blink. Again, Peck.
Thank you. Kojima. Laka Laka Monapuna. Lee. Nakamoto. Park.
Peck.
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 Well.
Salasa. Steel Quest.
Hey.
Ross.
Peck.
Motion passes with twelve votes for Member Peck, zero noes, or I'm sorry, and one abstention.
All right, the next item is secretary. So I'll be opening it for nominations once again, but first I'm going to call a brief recess. So we're having a really hard time with members even being able to vote. Should we be rearranging where the mic is?
Uh, so we're just using this mic now. I guess we don't.
Can you hear fine? Uh, let's, let's check in on this real quick. Give me a thumbs up if you can hear fine and a thumbs down if you cannot hear fine.
Yeah.
Okay, that was improved. Really happy to hear that. All right, we're going to end recess. All right, new location, new challenges, but we're going to continue through it. Um, the position of secretary, do we have any nominations for this position at this time? Absolutely. Um, let me see if I can pull something up on the neighborhood plan real quick. I did have that email go up. Would you be able to briefly summarize?
I honestly don't know the duties off the top of my head.
I can summarize the duties.
Thank you very much. Please, I'm going to recognize our second vice chair.
The duty of secretary are to take minutes if we don't have a neighborhood assistant. Okay, so if we have a special meeting someplace else and we don't have a neighborhood assistant to take minutes, then that person takes it for the meeting. It happens once every other year, maybe, yeah. Or if we, anyway, so that, so we have somebody that could do it if we need it. That's. Besides, you're an officer.
All right, thank you very much. Any questions or discussion on that? Recognize Janelle at this time.
I would like to nominate myself for secretary.
All right, thank you very much. Any additional nominations at this time? Any discussion? This can include questions for the candidate. Hearing none, I'm going to call the roll call vote.
Okay, so the current motion on the table is to elect Member Fujinaka for the position of secretary. Baldwin. Carson.
Fujinaka.
Char.
Fujinaka.
Farden.
Free Fujinaka.
Fujinaka.
I will abstain.
Kewanoo.
Fujinaka.
Blink.
Fujinaka.
Kojima. Laka Laka Monapuna. Lee. Nakamoto.
Fujinaka.
Nakamoto. Oh, I'm sorry. Park.
Fujinaka.
Peck. Salasa. Steel Quest.
Fujinaka.
Ross.
Fujinaka.
Uh, motion passes with the votes of twelve votes for Member Fujinaka and one abstention.
Also kindly note, for the neighborhood plan, which was distributed to board members ahead of time, page twenty-five gives a full description of all the officers. And as previously mentioned, we'll be having a discussion on potential to add additional duties later in this meeting. Uh, thank you very much, Fujinaka. Congratulations for reelection. Uh, finally, the final officer position to fill this evening is the position of treasurer. Do we have any nominations at this time? I will mention that we have.
Kewanoo.
We have a nomination for Richard Kewanoo.
I'm going to abstain. Thank you, though. Thank you, but, uh, not abstain, but I'm going to decline. But thank you very much. Appreciate it.
So we have had an interesting tradition as far back as twenty seventeen. Uh, each new treasurer is either reelected or at the time of their first election, actually an entirely new member. So if any of our new members are interested in stepping up to a leadership position, this has actually traditionally been that position. Do we get a script of this position as well? Absolutely. So, uh, page twenty-six of the neighborhood plan details that the duties of the treasurer is to assist the chair, vice chair, and secretary with conducting the meeting and administration of board activities, serving as the presiding officer and performing all duties and exercising all powers of a chair, vice chair, and secretary in their absence or disability, and performing duties that may be assigned as, uh, assigned by the board. Later on, we may consider assigning any additional duties, but I will put that my recommend, chair's recommendations was to also give the treasurer the duty of working closely with the chair and overseeing the utilization of board funds, which we now have a fully approximately one thousand each year, uh, and coming out with a outline of proposal how to spend this money by September thirtieth of each calendar year. Do we have any nominations at this time?
Volunteer.
Volunteer? All right, well, we have some new members here. Would you mind stating your name for the members who are attending digitally?
Hugh Kojima.
Hugh Kojima. All right, any discussion? Uh, Member Janelle Fujinaka is recognized at this time.
Thank you, Chair. Sorry about that. What was the new member's name that volunteered, sir?
Hugh Kojima.
Hugh Kojima. Okay, thank you.
All right. All right, well, then with that, I will call the votes.
Yeah, so the current motion on the table is to elect Member Hugh Kojima to the position of treasurer. Baldwin. Carson.
Kojima.
Char.
Kojima.
Farden.
Kojima.
Fujinaka.
Kojima.
Kewanoo.
Kojima.
Blink.
Kojima.
Uh, Kojima. Laka Laka Monapuna. Lee. Nakamoto.
Kojima.
Park.
Kojima.
Peck. Salasa. Steel Quest.
Kojima.
Ross.
Kojima.
Motion passes with a total of thirteen votes for Member Kojima. No abstentions.
Excellent. Well, congratulations to our new and returning board members and officers. And of course, welcome to all our additional board members and, and thank you for participating in our first officer election. All right, we're going to be moving on in the agenda. The next item on the agenda are the city and county of Honolulu monthly reports. First up, the Honolulu Fire Department. Are they represented here this evening?
Sorry, uh, we literally just got back from a call. That's the sound of the truck backing into the station. Can you guys hear me okay?
Yes, we can hear you fine. Thank you so much for being here this evening.
All right. Uh, let me get my bearings a little bit. All right, you ready?
Yep.
Okay, uh, let's see. Incident, incident statistics for the month of June for Makiki Fire Station Engine Three. We went to two structured fires, two nuisance fires, one cooking fire, nine activated fire alarms with no fire present, one hundred thirty-one medical calls, uh, one motor vehicle versus pedestrian collision, eight motor vehicle collisions, and one mountain rescue. The fire safety tip of the month is all about grilling safety. Keep, keep these tips in mind as you enjoy summer events and activities with family and friends. Always use barbecue grills outside away from doors, windows, vents, and other building openings. Place the grill well away from siding and deck railings and out from under eaves and overhanging branches according to the manufacturer's instructions. Keep children and pets at least three feet away from the cooking areas and keep starter fluid, lighters, and matches out of children's reach. Cook with caution, be alert, and stay at the grill while cooking. Never leave a hot barbecue unattended. Light a propane grill only with the cover open. If the flame on the propane grill goes out, turn the grill and gas off and wait at least five minutes before trying to relight. Periodically remove grease or fat buildup in the trays below the grill so it cannot be ignited by a hot grill. Let the coals completely cool before disposing in a metal container. Never empty coals directly into a trash can. Do not store or use a grill on a porch or balcony, including any porch or balcony on an upper level of the building. Always store propane gas tanks outside of buildings or garages. Remember to properly inspect and maintain the tank fittings and tubing according to the manufacturer's instructions. Vapors leaked indoors can be easily ignited by pilot lights or electrical equipment, causing an explosion. That's it.
Thank you very much for your report. Uh, do we have any questions from board members at this time? Member Kewanoo is recognized.
Hi, Captain.
Hi, Richard. How you doing?
Good, good. How you doing?
All right, long time no see.
Yes. Uh, is the fire department keeping track of lithium ion battery fires?
Uh, yes, uh, they just added a component to the reports that we do that are specific to those types of fires. In fact, even on medical calls, there's still an area that I have to check whether a battery was involved or not. But yeah, they just started tracking. It's, uh, been a lot more prevalent lately.
So it's a lot more prevalent, uh, so people are attaching these things to their homes, right? You know, for, they got solar roofs, they want to.
Uh, I'm not aware of too many like that. It's, uh, lithium ion batteries are in everything, your cell phone, your laptop computer. Uh, we've been getting a lot of those scooters and so forth, electric scooters, uh, catch fire, vaping, those vape things and so forth, so, uh, yeah, they come in all kinds of shapes and forms, not just the big power banks for solar or anything like that.
All right, thank you.
Sure.
All right, thank you very much. Uh, next, we're going to recognize Janelle. I saw your hand up. Did you still have a question? No? Do you have any other hands raised at this time? All right, well, thank you very much for your report. We look forward to seeing you next month.
Okay. Take care, everyone.
All right, next on the agenda, uh, we have the Honolulu Police Department. Hello, Lieutenant. Sergeant.
Yeah, hello, good evening, Chair Ross and everyone in attendance. Lieutenant Arnold Segusia, representing the Honolulu Police Department, District One, Community Area Responsibility. Thank you for you guys taking time and patience, and the information I'm providing today is the stats for your area. For more clear stat statistical information, you guys can go to our public website, www.honolulupd.org. The statistical information for the month of June is as follows. Motor vehicle deaths for June was ten. Previously, it was twelve. Burglaries was eleven. Previous month was eight. Deaths is thirty-six. Previous was forty-five, so it's down. UNVs is twenty-two. Car break-ins, yeah. UNV car break-ins is twenty-two. Previous month is twenty. Assaults is seven. Previous month is five. Sex assault and graffiti cases were zero for both months. Drug offenses were two. Previous month was two. Uh, I also, um, so, yeah, the total cost per service for the month of June was two thousand two hundred and seventy-six, compared to the previous month was two thousand four hundred and sixty-six. So there were on one hundred ninety less calls for service for the, uh, your area. I checked the categories of robbery and catalytic converter tests for June, and there was zero reported for those crime offenses. Uh, HPD, uh, Morsel District One is asking, uh, the board's help in getting, um, some legislation to make more regulatory laws in regards to these recreational vehicles, these e-bikes, uh, uh, non-pedal assisted e-bikes. Uh, they're becoming a public nuisance and causing traffic tie-ups in our district and including District Six, which is Waikiki. Most of these riders are okay, but some are doing stunts and illegal things on these, uh, recreational vehicles on the roadway, so we're asking for a little help in possible, um, regulatory legislation in regards to that. Uh, just an update in regards to our beloved Chief Lee Donahue's funeral and full honors pass and review. The date of the funeral is not yet. The date of the funeral is not yet known, uh, the department is giving the family some time, um, together, they're, uh, put their affairs in order and, um, you know, to go through, uh, the grieving process of his loss. Uh, I will update the Board of the actual date and time as soon as I get it. Uh, the safety tip of the month for July, uh, in regards to these e-bikes too, is the bicycle safety. In recent past, we have been responding to more and more, uh, vehicle versus bicyclist collisions. We're asking our community members and bicyclists to be more visible to drivers by wearing reflective personal equipment, safety equipment and helmets for safety. Uh, most bicyclist fatalities are usually due to riders not having a helmet or not being visible to drivers. Being aware of your surroundings, vehicular traffic and their movements would also prevent involuntary contact. Uh, use of hand signals will keep the drivers informed of your moving intentions. And finally, motorists should realize that green bicycle lanes allow bicyclists to move in both directions even on a one-way street. Uh, at this time, I'm gonna give back the rest of my time and take any questions from the Board and the public attendees.
Excellent. Our first question from Board members is from member Clink. Please go ahead.
Good evening Officer. Um, I live at Makiki and Heulu, H-E-U-L-U. And we're still having chronic problems too. Primarily number one is people will park illegally at the corner on the Eva side, Malka and Makai at Makiki and Heulu, on Heulu. Uh, making it impossible for people to see up Makiki Street. So when cars are coming down, they pull out and we've had a few accidents. Uh, one involving a woman who got really hurt. Um, and I noticed that, uh, there's seems to be some kind of leniency um, or, uh, maybe the officers are getting called to the corner thing and getting called off quick to go somewhere else with something triaging higher. Um, but the cars aren't getting tagged. And there's some chronic people that are doing it and getting away with it. And as a president of our building, people are asking if they're friends of the officers. I'm like, no, I'm sure they're not. It's just the officers have, get called off real quick when they're trying to get that done. Um, there's that. And then the second thing, which has been repetitive, I've mentioned at many board meetings, is the same two ladies are feeding chickens and, uh, cats at that same intersection. Um, and I understand it's kind of one of those humbug things for the police to have to deal with, considering the triage again of other more important things to deal with. But it's keeping everyone awake, starting at 1:00 AM and it affects the mood of everyone in the neighborhood, which I'm sure causes bigger problems during the day. Um, just to get a heads up on that and see, I, I, it's really frustrating to call a police officer to talk about a woman feeding chickens. But it's got a, it's a systemic issue with people not, especially with school coming back in the session. Kids aren't getting their sleep and it's just an ongoing problem. Thank you so much for listening, I appreciate it. And I promised my constituents in my building I'd bring it up again, so thank you.
Oh, that's pretty ironic because I have one of the officers that patrol that one particular area, so I'm gonna pass on this, um, Makiki and Heulu, um, situation in regards to the illegal parking around the corner, uh, to him. It's gonna be Corporal, uh, Justin McCallum Shiroma. I'm gonna provide it to him so he can make, um, checks of that particular area. Um, yeah, uh, w- w- we all know that in the Makiki area, uh, parking is of a premium. And obviously, a lot of these apartment buildings only offer one stall, so there's a lot of, uh, parking issues on the main street. Uh, we try to, we try to address it as much as we can. Um, there is some leeway and some officers discretion in regards to some of the, uh, the illegal parking. Um, because we all know, right, it's just, uh, parking is of a premium. Um, but if it's, if it's a violation that is, is, is fairly serious, if, if those officers come over there, please meet with the officers, because we usually ask for a 10-3, we call it a 10-3 or uh, a meetup with the person that's making the call. And then maybe the officer can explain if there's a non-citation issue or a citation issue or even if a toll, yeah. Um, in regards to this, um, person that's feeding the feral chickens and the feral cats in the area, um, if you see that person, please give us a call and we can go ahead and address it. Because there is laws on the books in regards to feeding feral chickens, yeah, we cannot be doing that. Um, in regards to the cats though, um, there are certain people that have permitting from, um, I, I don't know exactly where they're, they're getting the permits from, but they're allowed to feed feral cats. But that is in, um, with the stipulation that they're, uh, using, using that method in order to trap so that they can catch these feral cats and then they can, um, spare neuter them, yeah. So we don't know that, so that's why when we see that person, please give us a call, have the officers, um, make contact with that person and find out the legality of what, um, this person's doing.
Thanks Officer.
Alright, um, we have a question from, uh, member Harris Nakamoto. Please go ahead.
Good evening, uh, good evening, uh, uh,
Lieutenant.
Lieutenant, Lieutenant Segusio, um, this is Harris Nakamoto. Uh, my residence, I live on Kinau Street and, uh, my home is, uh, 922 Kinau Street, which is right on the backside of the, also that Darstuk Theater, so. But my, my question is, you know, that between 3:30 and 5:30, both sides, I guess there's no parking to be cleared. And, uh, it continues to be a, a problem, but, but the main problem is, and, and the question is, many of the cars that are parked, uh, during that time after, between those times, their, uh, their safety check is expired, some by maybe one or two years, and so, um, and, and, and that leads to probably those who own or drive those vehicles create a lot of the problems around the neighborhood. And so I wanted to, uh, understand maybe what would be the best process in terms of those, those vehicles who are not following the, the proper safety check, or some don't even have safety check, or some don't even have a license plate? What, what, what can we do?
Okay, so in regards to, um, I, I, I know this 922 area and then, um, it is a toll zone, yeah, during those particular times in the afternoon. Um, after those times, um, we normally don't check those, those locations after the toll zones. Um, it's because we, we, the cost for service is very high. But I can pass it on to the Beat 167 person, um, who takes care of that particular area to make checks of these, uh, expired, uh, violators, yeah, the safety checks and, um, no license plate. So in regards to the no license plate, um, you can call those in, yeah, because that's kind of a suspicious situation right there. Could be one of two things, that person's license plate could got stolen or those, that person is, um, removed the license plate to kind of obstruct or cause us to hinder us from identifying the owner of that vehicle. If you see that type of violation, go ahead and give us a call, we'll go ahead and check it out. Um, if you can give us the address that it's parked in front of, that would actually help us out better and, and a good description of that. But in regards to the safety checks, um, it's very difficult for my officers because right after toll zones, we have the most, one of the most toll zones, uh, in, um, in the entire island, yeah. The only, uh, district that has more toll zones than us is District 7, which is, uh, Kahala, Hawaii Kai, um, the Date Street area, tho- those places, yeah. So after the toll zones, um, we take care of those toll zones, then the calls for service kind of peak because everybody's arriving home at that point in time, so it's kind of difficult, but I'll, I'll relate it back to my 167 person and then have them make, um, a check of it, yeah.
So, thank you. So what if, what if if it's not during those times and like it's on a weekend and those cars are still parked and, and it's not a toll zone time, but then they have expired safety checks or no license plate, or even no license plate, but they write it, they write it in a black marker on the, on their car?
Um, so-
So it doesn't have to be during this, during the toll zone time, it could be on, on a very not busy time.
Okay, so with regards to, uh, that, uh, location and, um, without divulging the amount of officers that are working in that particular area, because it's an officer safety issue, yeah, uh, the calls for service from 6:00 AM in the morning to almost 8 o'clock at night is at peak level, yeah. And with the, with the shortage that we're going, uh, we're going to right now, but we're probably gonna alleviate some of that pressure when we go to the 3:13 schedule. Um, is usually, at that time, it's very, uh, fluid, yeah. The radio does not stop calling, yeah. We, we get calls like, I mean, I just told you that you guys had over 2,000, uh, calls in just a singular month, yeah, so that is just your particular area. Now imagine the rest that we have to also cover. Uh, we're not making excuses, we're just giving you the mirrored fact that it is a, a very busy location. And at night, um, we, we are, you know, also getting called to other locations to, to monitor that, so. Um, uh, best I can do is I can re- relate it to the 167 person and then we'll just make more checks, sir.
Thank you. And then, one last one. You know, I noticed on the exit from the highway off of Kinau, you nicely put those rumble, there's that rumble thing so that when you get off the highway, you have that to kind of remind you to slow down. But from Kinau Street, once it's straight away or from the Kinau and Ward, then based on the, the lights, it becomes like a raceway. So once the light turns green, then everybody just like racing down, down Kinau Street.
Uh, is this a question about the actual like rumble strips or related to law enforcement?
Related to speeding.
Okay.
So, so, because what happened was, this past Sunday, somebody actually tried to drift and they spin 360 and they went right into my yard. So, so if you look at, uh, Police Report Number 23-270710, then unfortunately I have to report that I, I was a wit- I, I was actually involved with a car coming into my yard. And almost, if I didn't have my hedges, it would have come right into my house. And backwards, so he came backwards. So I have to deal with that right now. And so that's a, that's related to speeding. Thank you.
Well, we'll, we'll let the people know, um, that particularly patrol that area, um, to make more checks. However, um, in that report, was that person intoxicated when, when that occurred and what time was it?
So that happened at 6:15 AM on Sunday. The person actually took off, so, uh, luckily we had video.
Sir, I'm just gonna step in here, uh, was this in the police report?
Yes.
Okay, so, uh, did you, we'll follow up to make sure you get the police report number, because if that's already been reported to you folks, um, I just wanna try to be a little bit cautious of our time. You're, you're right to bring up concerns about the community, but with the details of the case already documented, I will, uh, make sure you get that case number again, Lieutenant.
Oh, I got it already, thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. Um, alright, uh, Fujinaka, you're recognized at this time.
Thank you, um, Chair Ross. Uh, thank you so much Lieutenant Segusio again for coming and reporting to us. Uh, you guys are always doing a great job. I did have a question. As for the statistics, do you know if the homeless population within the area of, I believe it's, uh, Lulilo and Kinau, or no, Lulilo and Peetoi, or is it Pensacola? Have they started vacating a lot more often now that the city moved into the location? Because I did see that there was a cleanup, but then I don't know if it's mitigating the, the problem and situation right in that, uh, main area.
Yeah, that particular location is, is a, is a hot topic. Um, we're, it's a work in progress. Um, it did, it did alleviate some of the, uh, residentially challenged persons from hanging out over there since they had moved in. Um, they kind of trickle in and back and forth. Um, we also got our Narcotics Vice Division involved in regards to that location also because there was reports of drug dealing within the area. Um, so yes, we, we haven't forgotten about that location. Um, it's one of those things that it's just a, it's a daily work in progress. We keep on, um, making sure that we keep our tabs on it and just to make sure that it doesn't get out of hand. Um, but just realize this, right, so I, I, I think I reported on some other neighborhood boards that there is a push in regards to the rail construction, um, coming into our district. So once it starts proceeding into our district, we've, we definitely have seen an increase of, uh, residentially challenged persons within our area, yeah. So obviously, um, we, we gotta try to mitigate that problem, um, but we, we need to maybe get the city involved in regards to, um, housing and helping us clean up, because that is the biggest problem for our homeless population and, and law enforcement trying to take care of that situation, because we're just not equipped to handle all of the trash, um, that's left behind, yeah. So, I mean, maybe that's something you can bring up with the city.
Thank you so much sir, and thank you for all you guys do in our, our district.
Thank you very much, uh, member Park. You're recognized at this time.
Thank you Chair. Um, so Lieutenant, I did have, um, a question just to dovetail with, um, Board Member Fujinaka's question. Um, I know that on the top of Prospect and Ward, um, with Prospect Tower, um, there's been reports of, um, the homeless people going through the trash containers and looking for personal information. I was wondering as far as the reports that are being called in, if you have like a rough estimate of the number of reports as far as the homeless people um, going into, um, people's trash containers and trying to take personal information.
Um, that's a very good question. Um, so we, we kind of give, um, in services to people in regards to that, because obviously, um, your location, uh, there's a lot of dumpsters, yeah, so we have a, you know, a lot of these residentially challenged people, um, going around and dumpster diving, because that's all they do all day. Um, and that's where we find all of these, um, large furnitures, chairs, um, recliners, cushions, um, used beds in like these homeless encampments because they do rummage through the trash. Our best advice in order to protect yourself is to shred all your personal confidential information. Um, one of the things that, um, is, uh, some, some, um, professionals, um, tell us to do is use that blue dye that they use to, um, uh, you know, put in your laundry to make whites more white, um, to, to put it in, in, upon those pieces of paper and stuff like that, so that they, they, you know, it kind of, it's kind of a messy thing for them to, to look through. But shredding and destroying all personal confidential information is very important, yeah, not just, um, for your particular area. I mean, it's everywhere, yeah. So even like mail, um, you know, like sometimes the mailman, uh, comes and places like, or, or people put overflow mail on the top of the mailbox that they don't want, um, but they still have names, it still has addresses. Um, you never know, um, you could, you know, people could miss some pers- um, some bank statements and leave it out there and, 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 you know, sometimes we're our own worst enemy, yeah. So I'm just suggesting that you guys gotta be very careful with your personal confidential information and make sure you're shredded.
Thank you Lieutenant.
And, uh, we're gonna close out the, uh, the questions from Board members in just a moment, go to, uh, questions from the public. But I did get multiple reports from, uh, residents about an individual lower punchball going through people's mailboxes. I believe it was over the weekend. Um, do you have any information about that? They caught the person or anything like that? It was pretty big on social media, a lot of people forwarded it.
Yeah, at that point in time, so we're also, um, seeing a spike in that kind of activity on the Luna Lilo Street side, so it's not really in your district. It's, I think it's with Neighborhood Board, uh, if I'm not mistaken, of 12, uh, I think it's Pa'oa, that area too. So, uh, we're on the lookout for those people. Uh, I don't wanna really say what the tactics that we're using to, to kind of monitor that on, 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 on this public forum, but, um, they are, uh, uh, on our radar, so I'll, I'll get back to you in the next meeting in regards to any statistics that come out.
Thank you very much. With that, we'll close questions from Board members and open up questions to other residents. Uh, Claire Santos, she's recognized at this time.
Aloha everyone, Lieutenant Segusio. To the point of the gentleman whose wall and hedges were crashed on Kinau Street Sunday morning, uh, my dog and I, oh, we're one person, one being, right, we witnessed that. Um, and I, I provided the license plate number to the police, but I just want to bolster that account by saying that's the third accident that's been close to me and my dog at that early hour this year where we're half a block away and there's a crash at that intersection. It's a serious problem with red light running and speeding. So I, I did wanna back that up and, uh, that license plate, if it's not on your report, because one of the officers had it mixed up, was Sierra Papa Tango 774. Um, dumpster divers in the area of the top of Ward and Prospect and Spencer Street and, you know, all around there. I see them going away with can, uh, bags of cans and bottles. I was not aware of identity theft type situation and I'll keep a closer eye in my canine neighborhood watch at 5:30 in the morning. Um, other than that, lithium batteries, I've, I bought a backup battery for my condo, a little Yeti 200 and concluded to-
Is this related to the-
Oh, I'm sorry, I was, I was on the fire department. No, you're right, you're right, thank you. I was thinking back to the fire department lithium batteries. My mistake.
No problem.
I've got my blue uniforms mixed up. Thank you, that's all I have.
If you have a resource for us, Claire, you're always welcome to include me in the chat and I'll make sure that all Board members are emailed any comments from the chat at the end of the meeting.
Thanks so much, aloha.
Yeah, I'll, I'll pass on information to that 167 area. Just realize that the Ward, um, Kinau area is a major- Yeah, I'll I'll pass on information to that one six seven area. Just realize that the Ward um Kinalu area is a major um thoroughfare to get to central Honolulu. So it's a it's a busy, very busy intersection. We totally understand.
All right. Thank you very much, Lieutenant. Always good to see you. Appreciate your report. Um I will mention that last meeting and we didn't have time for it today anyway. I I had asked if you might be able to aggregate the last year's um crime report statistics uh together for our new board members. Uh no problem that we didn't get it tonight. Yeah, we ob- obviously are going quite over time already. Would do you think you might be able to supply that to us next month?
You know, I apologize. You know what? I I just remembered that. So you know, I'll send it to your email, sir.
Well, literally, uh no, no harm in this case because, you know, elections took quite a while. But I thank you very much. We appreciate it. And so our new members would love to see the aggregated data.
Absolutely. Thank you, sir.
See you next month. Uh is Board of Water supplied with us this evening? All right, seeing none, I've been requested to give a uh brief recess for swearing in of a few members who are joining us online. So we're gonna take a brief recess.
Okay, so uh Paul, uh Members Paul Plank, Janelle Fujinaka, and Richard Kewano. If you guys could all just turn on your cameras so that way I can swear swear you out. Thank you, Richard. Thank you, Paul. Janelle, are you still there? Janelle, are you still there?
You just need one-
Yes, I'm here. Sorry.
Okay, so I'm gonna go ahead and recite the oath of office. And if you guys could just say whether or not you agree at the end, that'll uh that'll be fine, okay? I solemnly swear that I will faithfully support the Constitution and the laws of the United States of America, the Constitution and laws of the State of Hawaii, the Charter and laws of the City and County of Honolulu, and the provisions of the Neighborhood Plan, and will conscientiously and impartially discharge my duties to the best of my ability as a member of the Neighborhood Board to which I have been elected. Do you agree?
I agree.
I agree.
Okay, great. Thank you very much. Congrats, you guys.
All right, calling the meeting back to order. The next item on the agenda is Board Business Continued. Uh next item there was additional roles and responsibilities of officers. I'm going to share my screen. So I took the liberty of drafting some potential proposals for additional duties of officers. Uh of course, we have some people, we don't have the physical copy, so I'll be reading some of them out, or at least the highlights. Unless I, uh can you folks all see that pretty okay? Okay, good. Never mind then. Um so uh as Neighborhood Plan says, that a lot of the duties of officers are as assigned by the Chair and the uh the Board. Uh so I thought we might take some best practices, uh some basic ideas. Or um we did do this in the past, assigning the Vice Chair the duty of working with the Chair and disseminating the agenda by posting on social media platforms. And I went ahead and just assigned two really good examples, uh Facebook and Nextdoor. Um Makiki especially has a very big growing presence on Nextdoor, and it could be of value to do that. Uh also, we did actually have Sam Mitchell previously as a board member who just did this in his individual capacity. And uh you know, he's not with us on the board anymore, so it's institutionalizing a role. A second Vice Chair, Manoa, actually is given the duty of timekeeping during meetings, especially being in person partially now. It's very important. We respect our host's time, potentially have someone looking after that. Uh for Secretary, this is sort of already in the duties, so this is clarifying. But currently, the Secretary is not CC'd in the emails for uh the agenda. And the basic idea is just expecting the Secretary to at least look at the minutes to make sure that they appear to be good, including the right types of things. Uh additionally, um oh, and additionally, uh the duty of making sure that our resolutions and letters are going out in a timely manner. You know, uh we draft these things, they look pretty good, but sometimes there is a little bit of a hiccup in communication with the NCO. And just, you know, if we have problems, let's institutionalize solutions and just make sure our board communication goes out timely. Uh and then finally, for Treasurer, which famously doesn't uh didn't really have anything assigned to them, uh this would actually just give them the role of working with the Chair and the Board to make a proposal to the Board outlining uh intended use of funds. Uh this is not required that they come up with the best idea ever. It doesn't mean that they disseminate the funds. It's still the Board's duty to do this. But it just essentially gives them the role of putting in that first draft of how we might use the funds for the betterment of the community. And so this is a basic thing I've drafted. Uh this is, of course, open to discussion, motions, amendments, et cetera. But I just went ahead and put this together, looking at some best practices of other boards and things I've heard. Uh this is open to discussion and any uh motions would be in order at this time. I see Fujinaka's hand up. Fujinaka is recognized.
Uh thank you so much, Chair. Uh sorry, having a bit of technical issues as I'm navigating, but I would like to um say thank you for putting together that um proposal. I I agree that we we should be, or at least my position, should have a little bit more interaction with the NCO in order to get this out on a timely manner because uh like the minutes and everything, i- if we can work on notifying our our neighborhood through our social media pages, and that would be um awesome. Um so yeah, I think if we can leave it open for discussion to amend um some of the duties and responsibilities now and then, then that would be perfect.
Okay. Thank you very much for the comment. I'm gonna recognize Member uh Kojima at this time.
Is there a record of how previous boards have used their funds or maybe records of other boards, how they've used their funds?
That is an excellent question. The funds were only implemented in the last year. Uh so I don't think, um actually, Logan, do you can you weigh in on this a bit?
Yeah, so a couple of boards have used them for like uh public events, whether it's cleanups, whether it's advertising the Neighborhood Board meetings, you know, just putting fires up in the community, stuff like that. Uh another good thing is like if you guys want ever want to participate in like parades or you guys want to have like a tent at um neighborhood functions, things like that. Anything like that is uh that's well within uh the the, you know, fair use of the uh the monit- uh the money. And um just for and just to add on to that, you guys are, um once everyone fills out the board member contact info sheets, our office is renewing all of our paperwork and we're gonna provide everyone with like uh t-shirts basically. So that way you guys can show that you're members, and that way, if you guys are ever at these functions, uh you guys can display it. And that will not be coming uh that will not be a part of the thousand dollars allocated.
That's good to know because fun, uh t-shirts was one of the top things of mine for me. Okay. Do you have any clarifying questions or? Thank you very much. I recognize Member Farden at this time.
Thank you, Chair. I like the ideas of having a third or second Vice Chair oversee our communications. But being within my second term and knowing how many uh PIGs and committees that we've had, I'm wondering if the second Vice Chair would take lead and responsibility on either technical or programmatic committees. And that way, it would help with the committee leads to establish their meetings, their cadence, resources that they need if we have a Vice Chair that also helps all of those committees as well.
Thank you very much. Uh that your point is well taken. Uh and that of course brings to mind the fact that the one officer position not listed here currently would be the third Vice Chair, which we just established. But thank you very much, Member Farden, for that suggestion. All right, well, we have a draft here. Uh we've had some discussion. We could uh motion to accept. We've also heard about the importance of maybe keeping the discussion open. So if we don't vote on this this evening, I'll put it on the agenda for next month. And I do think there's not necessarily any pressing time consideration for adoption. So what do we want to do? Is there a motion? Oh, I see a hand up by a member Char. Please go ahead, uh Vice Chair. Uh we can't hear you, Nathan.
I didn't unmute myself. Okay, um I was gonna say, so what what do you have the Nextdoor like link? That would be pretty good because I am wholly unfamiliar with Nextdoor and seeing as I'm the Vice Chair and I would be uh taking on this duty of uh posting it on social media. I know our Facebook, but I do not know where we I would go.
I could give you a quick tutorial on Nextdoor, and it does say assist the Chair. So if we want to split duties between social media, I'm happy to do that too. Okay. Well, I'm not necessarily hearing a motion at this time and we are kind of tight on the agenda. So I'm just gonna roll this over to next meeting. Uh if people want to think about ways that we can improve the Board, one way, good way to do that is to put people in responsibility. Uh also, I do want to note one idea that Farden gave about, you know, we do a lot with PIGs and committees and giving someone some oversight on those, uh is something potentially well worth considering. All right, I'm gonna move forward in the agenda. Uh the next item on the agenda is meeting date, time, location, and format. Um all right, as in my role as Chair, I selected this location for meeting. It was in consultation with organizations like our COVID Communications uh and Technology um PIG that we had last year. We are here now, but considerations about the meeting time, date, and location is up to the entire Board. Uh so do we want to adopt a uh which time of the month do we meet, uh what time we meet at that day, and the location at this time? Do we have any motions? Please do. Please go ahead.
I'd I'd recommend that we go the third Thursday of every month at six o'clock.
At six o'clock, okay, which is currently the set situation. Would you like to also include a location?
I think Makiki District Park's a great place.
The place we're meeting at right now?
Yes.
Excellent.
If you haven't been here, it's really nice.
Sure. We can break that down. Oh, should we? Can we do this stuff?
We could do it all in one.
Okay. So Logan suggested we also include the format. For example, do we want to do it hybrid with WebEx?
I I I believe um-
Wait, sorry. Pardon me. Point of order. Was that a motion or?
That was a motion.
Uh so it is a motion. Would you also like to include in your motion uh the format such as WebEx Hybrid?
I would think uh in-person and hybrid simultaneously makes sense.
Thank you very much. So we have that. Um I will recognize Fujinaka if you would like to second at this time.
Yes, I'd like to second that motion with the corrections for the hybrid.
Oh, okay. So uh potentially a motion to correct. Please go ahead.
No, I I wanted to say that, yes, with the correction that he added the hybrid.
Yeah.
Thank you very much. All right, I need discussion. Uh would you not uh would you not get a Joel to have some discussion?
No, not on the server.
Thank you very much. Kewano.
Uh yes, can we get a better camera angle? I see you, I see John, and after that, you know, in the future, is is this a, can we get a better wider angle camera?
Who would you like to see, Richard?
Well, the the whole board, like in the park, back at the uh at the Arts and Crafts Building, you know, there the camera would pan because right now I see one, two, three, and then I don't recognize anybody else.
Yeah, and you shoot down the table.
So uh just just for some context, uh it's just uh it's just the, I think, seven of us here right now. And in the future, if you guys have better attendance at your in-person location, we can actually get uh one of the alelo videogra- videographers down here to Makiki District Park. It all just depends on uh how many people are here. If it's just gonna be, you know, um I think, yes, seven board members, then it it would probably just be my handheld camera, yeah?
I will endeavor not to take that as a slight. Thank you very much, Logan. All right, uh any further discussion on the meeting location? Member Fujinaka, you're recognized at this time.
Thank you, sir. Um yes, I did have a question. If we are gonna do this hybrid, are we requiring that all um officers at least be present in person at the meetings? Or are we just okay with the hybrid and in-person?
I don't believe we would require any officers being in person, though I imagine as Chair, uh I will try to consistently be in person. I believe some consistency on that front would be very helpful. Uh Member Char is recognized at this time. Did you have anything to add, Char? Are you are you speaking?
You're muted.
You're muted.
Ah, okay, that that would explain. Uh uh I am just getting over a cold, but I hope to be there uh in the future. Got it.
All right, there we go. All right, in which case, um you know, I will actually note, uh since we're having a bit of discussion on the people being separately, uh at one previous location, we were having a technical difficulty and I was in person sharing. And we're having some issue hearing me and actually letting uh Nathan Char take over sharing for a little bit while we fix that because he was online, actually worked quite well. So it actually might be useful, you know, we don't need to require them being in the same spot. There are benefits occasionally to having officers in other locations. So I just want to note that. All right, uh so we have a uh motion and a second for location. I don't believe we need any further discussion. I'm gonna attempt for uh expediency's sake to see if we can uh accept this uh by affirmation because we didn't have anyone seemingly opposed to it. So if no one is opposed and no one's abstaining on this motion, we can pass it by unanimous consent. At this time, would anyone like to abstain or vote no? Hearing none, we have a location, date, time, uh and format. Great. Uh next up, determination of recess schedule. We can have up to three per year now. I believe it was previously two. I also believe we they cannot be consecutive. Is that right, Logan? They cannot be consecutive. Previously, we've taken December off, but we can pick any month. Do we have a motion for determination of recess schedule?
Chair, I'd like to make a motion to um accept the pre- previous um dates that we had, which was gonna be in Christmas, New Year's, and I believe it was Thanksgiving, if I was uh stand corrected on those dates.
I believe previously, we just had December, um but uh we can of course change it. Is that a motion for December?
Uh yes.
Okay, we have a motion for recessing just on in December. Member Kewano is recognized.
Oh, okay. I was gonna say that for December.
Would you like to second?
Uh yes, I'll second that.
With with a motion and a second, any further discussion? Hearing none, um I'm gonna seek unanimous consent for the recess schedule. Is anyone opposed or abstaining? Member Char is recognized.
Oh, I'm sorry. Is this the whole reset? Like, we're not gonna nominate further days uh for recess or months for recess?
If you'd like to amend the motion, uh that would be in order.
Okay, I was gonna say-
Pardon me, Nate. Uh I hear from Logan, we can do a second motion. So I'm gonna seek again, we have misconsent. Any abstentions or opposition? Hearing none, we now have December off. A member Char is recognized at this time.
Uh yeah, I was going to recommend uh May since that is uh like graduation and the start of summer break. So it would be good to allow folks with kids who'd like to spend time with them to take that off.
All right, is if that's a motion, do we have a second?
I second the motion.
Uh any discussion? It'd be double the amount of recesses, but we do have the reasoning of um of graduation. Uh Member uh Farden is recognized at this time.
Thank you, Chair. I do like the idea of having May off for families. However, because of the legislative session ending around April, I think it'd be very pertinent for us to still have a May meeting, especially for that legislative wrap-up, which is very important for the Board and the neighborhood. And perhaps we can consider a different month for a bye. Thanks.
Thank you very much, Member Farden. I recognize Member Kewano.
I I think we should only have one month off. We got a busy schedule. As far as impacting families, we're talking one night at six PM, and they don't have to come to the meeting that uh so I think we should just have one month off per year.
Thank you very much. Uh I recognize uh Member Carson.
You're muted.
You're a muted person.
I'm sorry. I was just going to agree with what was said by um Farden and Kewano, so.
Alright, uh I do believe we're gonna do a roll call at the sound as we have the motion before us. Uh Logan, please uh take us to the roll call.
Yes, so the motion on the table is to recess in May of 2024. It was made by member Char and seconded by a member Fujinaka. Baldwin? Carson?
No? Or sorry, recent. I'm sorry, I misunderstood the vote. This is just about December?
Uh this is ju- so.
December passed.
Yeah, December passed by unanimous consent um in the meeting. And now we, the motion on the table is to recess in May of 2024.
Okay, thank you. Sorry about that. Uh my vote is no.
Thank you. Char?
Uh no.
Farden?
Wait. Pause for a second.
Yep.
Recession. Can I recess during the vote?
Uh I it's best to.
Point of order. We are in the middle of a vote.
We have a vote no by the person we nominate. Can I ask for a recall of the motion?
Um I think at this point is just because the.
Okay, I'm ending recess. We're back in.
Point of order. We are in the middle of a vote. We cannot pause and take a recess in the middle of a vote. Point of order.
I did check with the uh NCO and they didn't say that there was against the rules. But please continue with the vote.
Okay. Uh back to the motion at hand as to recess in May of 2024. I'm just gonna go ahead and restart the uh roll call. That's okay. Baldwin? Carson?
No.
Char?
No.
Farden?
N.
Fujinaka?
N.
Kewano? Richard? You're out muted, Richard.
I was muted. Okay, yeah, uh no.
Thank you. Clint?
No.
Kojima? Laka Laka, Manapuna? Lee?
Oh.
Nakamoto?
No.
Park?
No.
Peck? Salassa? Steelquist?
No.
Ross?
No.
Motion does not pass. Uh thirteen votes for no recess in May.
Alright, if there's no uh if no one's opposed, I'm gonna move on in the agenda to determination of, pardon me, the adoption of oral testimony rules. Our current rules are as follows. Please come to the top of the agenda. The current rules are anyone wishing to speak is asked to raise their hand and when recognized by the chair to address comments to the chair. Speakers encouraged to keep their comments under three minutes and those giving reports are urged to keep their reports under three minutes. Please silence all electronic devices. I believe in previous years, we had two minutes for comments and three minutes for reports, but all this is up to determination by the board. Um is there any motion at this time to adopt rules of speaking for the comments and for reports? Uh member Fujinaka's hand is raised and is recognized.
Thank you, Char Russ. Uh yes, I'd like to go ahead and adopt or make the motion to adopt the current um speaking order.
Is there a second?
Say that correctly?
Uh yes, I believe that would be sufficiently worded. Is there a second?
Second?
Second.
Okay, any discussion? Hearing none, I'm gonna seek unanimous consent for adopting uh this these uh rules for speaking. Has anyone opposed or abstaining at this time? Hearing none, we passed the rules with unanimous consent and we can move on to the next item on the agenda. We uh reorganizing the Makiki Lower Punch Bowl Tantalus Neighborhood Board number ten to a combination of at-large and or sub-district seats. Uh so in the past, we have had discussion on the potential of getting rid of sub-districts at different times. We have vacancies on some boards and uh areas and others. We have a uh competitive elections in some areas with a an excess of people being interested and in other areas um having no election at all. Uh so we have the potential for doing that. We also have the potential, if we want, to actually just amend the lines. We offer, for example, the Makiki Lower Punch Bowl Tantalus Neighborhood Board. If we wanted to rearrange the lines and adjust the number of members for each sub-district, that is also um a possibility. All recommendations would go to the neighborhood commit um pardon me, mission, yeah, just the neighborhood commission or potential for adoption, which would also have to do with estimations of populations to rearrange the seats. So those technical considerations are not necessarily up to us. Uh at this time, I'm gonna share uh my screen where I did some potential redrawing for the line. But do we have uh any discussion or motion for either option? Or we can also, without a vote, keep what we currently have? I recognize member uh Fujinaka at this time.
So um just for clarification, uh request for discussion on the topic.
Absolutely.
So for the discussion on the topic of redistricting for our area and sub-districts, what would be the difference if we got rid of the sub-districting? And like, how would that actually affect any of the elected current board members?
Excellent question. My understanding is that it would apply potentially for um filling of vacancies but not affect anyone who's currently elected. I also think the neighborhood commission has some say on this and we might be able to weigh in somewhat in terms of requests. Uh we also are fortunate to of course have, as always, Tom Heinrich in this meeting and his hand is raised as well. We might recognize him in a moment. But did I uh more or less get to the need of answering your question?
I think so. I I just wanted to make sure, like, if we make a motion to, like, eliminate sub-districts and just become one neighborhood board, um if that's even possible without the redrawing of lines.
Thank you very much for that question. Uh Steelquist seems to indicate he believes so as well. I'm gonna recognize uh Tom Heinrich at this time.
Uh thank you, Chair, uh and aloha, everyone. Uh Tom Heinrich, speaking in my individual capacity. Uh I think it is more appropriate for the board uh to postpone uh any action on this topic. Uh this is something that certainly bears far greater consideration, not just by the board members, but by members of the public. Uh and uh putting a motion forward at this point certainly uh uh preempts a lot of other public consideration that should go into something like this. Uh I have had discussions before with a number of the members of your board as to some of the options. The key point for the moment is simply this. Whatever you might wish to propose will have to be presented in accordance with the neighborhood plan to the neighborhood commission. And any of those changes ultimately become effective unless otherwise stated by the commission become effective now with the 2025 neighborhood elections. So there is considerable time, I would say twelve to eighteen months at the most, uh in order to really fully evaluate the various uh potentials uh and then to make uh a presentation uh in application to the neighborhood commission. So in that regard, uh any further discussion this evening is fine, but I certainly would not well recommend that the board uh uh consider any motions uh with such an absolutely abbreviated discussion. Uh and I'm certainly available as a resource uh for this because I have helped with other uh uh both internal and external uh meeting perimeter uh boundary changes uh over the years with a a number of boards. Thank you, Chair.
I wanna recognize our neighborhood assistant Hutchinson. Please go ahead.
Yeah, hi, everyone. Uh just uh some clarification. So just for an, as an example, um one thing that, for instance, the IA of Neighborhood Board just recently did is they've been having one or two or they currently have three vacancies. And so what they did is they put a motion to change just those three vacancies, which I believe were two Subdistrict One and Subdistrict Four vacancies, to change just those three into at-large seats just for the remainder of the term, just as a way to fill those vacancies uh to expedite the process. And then they considered that at a later date, putting something on the agenda after more research could be done, like uh like uh Tom said, to basically have more a long-term solution put in place going into next term and the future.
Thank you very much. I believe we have a hand there. Could you switch your view?
Yeah.
I recognize uh Richard at this time.
Yeah. Well, my main concern is there have been occasions when people have come to our meetings, they want to go on the board and they can't because that particular district is filled. So yeah, what I'm looking for is a way that if there are vacancies and somebody, you know, presents himself to get on the board, uh that we can get around that restriction. And I'm thinking, you know, have have a hybrid, uh take one seat away from each district and make it uh uh you know, uh an open, open seat. And I know uh Logan was saying, somebody was saying that it just is not workable. I couldn't quite understand why it wasn't workable.
Member Fujinaka is recognized at this time.
Um I actually agree with um Tom on this. I I think there is uh more dialogue that needs to be discussed with our our district itself and including our public in the discussion of if we are gonna plan on redistricting um and limiting sub-districts. So I actually would wanna know if we can suggest um maybe a perhaps a committee to do more research on it. We stay with the current standard at hand and then we go move forward once the committee has met, um done the research, has talked with uh members from the neighborhood commission to make a decisive decision that can be presented to the board, then we can vote on a particular issue to re-subdistrict or eliminate sub-districts um for this topic.
Thank you very much. Uh your point is well taken on that. Committees, I will note, is the next item on the agenda. Is there any further discussion at this time? Saying that. Alright, hearing no discussion, uh and we didn't have a motion. And hearing no motion, I'm just gonna close this out by presenting that uh the fact that it's pretty easy if you get on some sort of like paint or Canva to play around potential for lines. So if you want a further discussion, it's useful, I think, to show some visual examples as well. Uh with that, we will go ahead and move on to the next item on the agenda, committees. The first there is the establishment of committees. Um is there any, uh I think it might be useful for expediting this. Wait one second. Does it make sense to just do one motion of all the committees or do each?
That's how I've done it through so so far this month.
So typically, I've heard that boards typically uh group together all the committees they want to nominate to do. So we have to do like arguing over and over and over again and doing each motion. So let's have a discussion and then at uh appropriate point, we can then motion for a number of these committees to be formed. With that in mind, any thoughts on uh wait, do we need to, uh first meeting on I as chair enabled to be able to form a committee and appoint a chair?
Uh I.
Yes, yeah, yeah.
I don't see why not.
Okay, so it sounds like as chair, I do have the capacity in the initial convening meeting. I do think I remember that in the neighborhood plan to only during this meeting to establish committees and to appoint chairs and has been practiced in the past. Do you have any ideas for committees we'd like to have? Uh you recognize member Fujinaka.
Uh I think we should formulate a committee on the previous topic at hand, which was to determine um the adoption of a possible one district or sub-district seats.
Thank you very much. I recognize member Lee at this time.
Yes, Chair, um I'd like to continue my um Makiki Punch Bowl Neighborhood Security Watch Committee, but I'm not sure if this is the format to do it in since I'm not gonna be um part of the neighborhood board. It's gonna be independent.
Then then.
Probably not.
Well, we do have you on the agenda towards the end where you can give us a report on it.
Okay.
And we'll, I will plan to keep the Neighborhood Security Watch as a separate organization represented on our agenda so we can get reports. Uh as chair, uh I'm inclined to start the committee related to um to committee on hmm, what would be a good name? Do we have any suggestions for names for a committee uh for potential of looking at changing the sub-districts?
Suggestion, that might be better as a PIG rather than a committee. Is that the one-time activity?
That is a good suggestion in terms of potential for a PIG. Do we do have a potential considered as a PIG, but it's not on the agenda at this time?
Well, I just think a committee for reapportionment is kind of odd because it's a one-time thing. That's definitely, that's what PIGs do, one-time activities.
Okay, it's not on the agenda, so we can't form a PIGs.
Yeah, so uh one recommendation is just to make it a bit broader of a topic. That way the committee can tackle it, like you guys. Another example I have from another one of my boards is they have what uh I believe it's Planning and Zoning Committee. So something like that, that could be a point of interest for the uh the Makiki sub-districts, could be a point of interest for the Planning and Zoning Committee. Something along those lines.
Okay, that's a fair point. Uh I'm not sure what that would be just at this time. Uh I recognize uh Tom Heinrich.
Uh thank you, Chair. Uh I just wanted to note uh that uh for the discussion of uh potential changes to boundaries or sub-districts and all that kind of stuff, uh that is certainly something appropriate for a committee in order to encourage public participation in that discussion compared to a public interaction, or excuse me, permitted interaction group, uh which could be set up in certain ways, but it is in stark contrast on this topic, uh that it is not well-suited uh to gather that information, uh uh which should be discussed more in a committee. So just putting that uh that there. And if it's treated in a larger committee, uh as Logan just suggested, uh for uh general planning or something else like that, that fits in. It just uh depends on how you put it on the agenda. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you very much. I'm I'm thinking similarly, uh I would like to actually form the uh committee on let's see, reorganizing the Makiki Lower Punch Bowl Tantalus Neighborhood Board, and that would be able to consider things. And I think under that umbrella, roles of officers could be out of the purview and uh other things of that nature. Um I'm gonna recognize Kewano at this time.
Yeah. Uh yeah, I'm not understanding the distinction between a PIG and a committee, Tom, that you were making.
Uh I'm gonna recognize uh our NCO assistant.
Yeah, uh Richard, so the I mean, the biggest difference is a permitted interaction group. It's it's just that. It's a it's a group, right? Basically, just those people that the board selects, they're the ones that are allowed to discuss. They're the ones allowed to conduct research. They're the ones allowed to present the findings of fact before the board. A committee is something like how you have your housing committee every month. Basically, it's a public forum for matters on that point of discussion, whether whatever agenda item that committee decides, stuff like that is open to the public to uh contribute as well.
Okay, thank you. I I understand. Thank you.
Do we have anyone who would volunteer to be chair of a um reorganizing committee? I promise to be involved and help out, so I'll attend all the meetings and help out. I think it would be best to revisit this next time because it's kind of holding up the agenda. Uh is there any interest in bringing back and continuing the homelessness committee or perhaps a homelessness and housing committee?
Yeah, I think we should keep it. Yeah, I think we should keep it, but I'm gonna step down as the chair. But I'm hoping that somebody will step up and uh and if not, I will do the chair again, but if one of the other members would want to be the chair, I have, thank you very much. I would appreciate it.
So uh as chair, I think I can appoint co-chairs. There's nothing in the rules against co-chairs at committees, right? So would any of our new members like to step up and help on the issue of homelessness and co-chair? Oh, so you're excellent. Um can you turn your name tag? I'm so sorry. I'm still trying to get to know everyone here. Thank you very much, Ken Pep. Yes. So our second uh uh sorry, our third vice chair, Peck, uh has graciously offered to co-chair the committee with Kewano. So I do establish the establish the homelessness committee with our two co-chairs. Um furthermore, do we?
Yeah.
Thank you both so much for your help.
I'll volunteer to be the reorganization committee.
Okay, thank you very much. And Steelquist will be chairing uh will be chair of the reorganizing committee um for the neighborhood board and I'm definitely very. um, for the neighborhood board, and I definitely very much appreciate that. Um, do we also want to continue the Parks and Library Committee? I recognize Vice Chair Char.
Uh, well, seeing as I'm about to get extremely busy, uh, and I was already busy enough that I was not, not really able to do much with the, uh, Parks Committee earlier this year, uh, I would, it would be good for me to not be chair for it again.
Okay, do we have anyone who would volunteer, uh, to be chair of this committee? The major business has to do with, of course, working in the location we're at right now. This was one of the, uh, projects that the committee, uh, came out and supported. Uh, there's also potential, and we have a lot of support in the community for potential of a dog park, and this has been a issue of discussion. Would anyone like to chair a committee on, uh, library and parks? Hearing none, I will move on then. So we do have, uh, two committees formed. Let's move on in the agenda. Thank you very much for everyone who offered to be chairs. Uh, we have, uh, membership for these committees. Uh, so at this time, uh, if anyone would like to raise their hands, they can, uh, say if they'd like to become a member of any of these committees. Actually, you know what? Uh, in the interest of time, I believe we're just gonna send out a Google form to allow us to more expeditiously get through the potential membership ahead of next meeting. Uh, I recognize, uh, Tom Heinrich. Uh, you're muted. You're speaking.
Sorry, can you hear me now?
I can hear you now.
Okay, thank you. Uh, just a reminder that for committees, uh, members of the public are eligible to serve on committees, not as chair, uh, but as members. And in that regard, I would be interested, uh, in serving as a member on, I'll just call it your reorganization committee, uh, at this point, uh, so I'll for that. Thanks.
Thank you, Tom.
Thank you very much. And again, um, we definitely appreciate that one, and so I'll put you folks in touch. Uh, I suppose you already have the contact information for each other. All right, uh, we're gonna move on then to resident and community concerns. Uh, on this part of the agenda, it notes it's limited to two minutes each, but I believe our rules supersede this. Is that right, Logan? A three-minute rules?
Uh, yeah, what are we guys just adopted without being informed?
Okay, so we allow for up to three minutes for anything not on the agenda. We cannot take action, but would anyone like to bring up anything at this time? I recognize member Fujinaka with three minutes, up to three minutes.
Thank you. Um, I actually had a, a question in regards to, I know we had the discussion previously in regards to the pipes for border water supply for the, uh, the new, um, what is it called at the top? Uh, the reservoir, the new reservoir that was, um, gonna be constructing. Are they even actually starting that construction project? Um, and then there's been a lot of, uh, construction going on on Peakoi, so between Peakoi and Wilder, I, I'm not sure what's going on if that's part of it. So that's probably one of the things I wanted to bring up.
Okay, I think we can talk to the mayor's representative somewhat about that a little bit later. All right, thank you very much. I recognize Tom Heinrich.
Uh, thank you, Chair. Actually, on Janelle's first point, uh, one thing I did want to report, and unfortunately, we didn't have a border water supply representative earlier this evening, uh, but in follow-up to a constituent's, uh, phone call today, uh, about activity going on on Prospect Street. So between, I forget if it's Royal Vista condo, uh, but the last condo before you have the open space and then the Stevenson baseball field, uh, so that, uh, uh, location, uh, that, that is now, uh, uh, in active use as a construction base yard for the Pence, the Board of Water Supplies, uh, Pensacola, uh, from Nihua to Kinau, uh, street, uh, 24-inch pipeline, uh, project. Uh, again, the 2 million, uh, gallon reservoir tank that was contemplated for across a Wailimu upslope from Lincoln Elementary, that has been canceled. That by conversation with Border Water Supply again, uh, today is not going to happen. But the pipeline, the additional, uh, distribution pipeline, uh, that will come under, uh, H1, uh, between Kinau and, uh, Lunalilo, uh, especially, uh, is going in. So I just wanted to make mention of that because there may be additional, uh, obvious construction movements of materials between that area on Prospect Street, uh, uh, over to Pensacola, and then at the end of the day or whatever, backup Peakoi to get back to, uh, that base yard. Uh, as to the other location on Peakoi, I don't know anything about, uh, about that one. Uh, but as the Border Water Supply, uh, that project is now underway, uh, again, and is expected to go for probably, uh, the guestimate is another 12 months. Uh, so it'll be a while, so just be cautious there. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you very much, Tom, for that. Um, do we have any further resident or community concerns at this time? I recognize Chuck Lee.
Yes, Chair, is it appropriate for me to, uh, mention Chick-fil-A's opening?
Uh, yes, this would now be the appropriate time. Thank you.
Okay, um, Chick-fil-A is going to have their official public opening on July 27th. Uh, they'll be open at 6 o'clock in the morning and close at 9 o'clock in the evening and closed on Sunday.
All right, thank you very much. I recognize member Fujinaka at this time.
Uh, just to, um, add on to member Lee's notion, are, are we actually going to be going to, um, Chick-fil-A's and the Neighborhood Board to represent, or is that something that we should do separately and privately?
It is not something that is currently on the agenda, so it's not for consideration for board action. Uh, individuals are welcome to go to any events they would like to, and as long as they're not speaking as a spokesperson, they are in a sense able to represent themselves at these events. As chair, I can also select representatives of the board. I'm inclined not to in the circumstance, though, speaking on behalf of myself as chair. I recognize member Kwanu.
Uh, yes, this Tuesday, I just saw it on the, got an email, uh, the 25th, uh, there's gonna be a event at the University of Hawaii's School of Law concerning street safety. So 6:30 PM, and I think you'd have to, I, I think, want you to sign in and say you're gonna go through, like I did, I did it through Eventbrite, the website.
Thank you very much. I believe the event is Reclaim Our Streets, Making Hawaii's Roads Safer and More Sustainable, Tuesday, July 25th at 6:30 PM at William S. Richardson School of Law Classroom 2. I will go ahead and share the RSVP link in the chat next time I get a moment. Any further community discussion at this time? Please go ahead. You're recognized.
Eric, also, we should have come down here.
Yeah, sorry, Eric. If you want, you wanna speak over us right here, you're welcome to.
Just wanted a note, um, every Thursday here at, uh, St. Clement's, uh, Elementary School and Church, they have the farmer, the Community Farmers Market every Thursday. Um, it's just a thought, it's a great place for us to do some more community outreach as a neighborhood board. Um, you know, it's a great, there are a lot of good vendors down there. You know, I would like to support them as a neighborhood board for, because it'd be a great place, easy place for us to outreach to our community, because it's a very good central spot. There's a lot of foot traffic, a lot of people coming in. Uh, but yeah, just a thought, uh, about the farmers market every Thursday, uh, over here at, at St. Clement's.
Thank you very much. Uh, checking one last time for any further, uh, discussion. Uh, anyone in attendance is welcome to bring something up that's not on the agenda. Okay, hearing none, we're gonna move on to unfinished business. The first item of unfinished business is a resolution. Share your screen. This was a resolution considered during the final meeting of the last term. It did not pass. It had no no votes, but there were two abstentions. Typically, I've gone in the habit of bringing up motions that, uh, were voted down by the board for later consideration, but this one had no one in opposition. So I thought I'd bring it up for further consideration. Uh, member Carson and myself were able to draft it, uh, resolution supporting the banning of second jobs for the Honolulu City Council members. Discussions or motions are in order, um, at this time. It can be found on the Google Drive. Anyone who'd like to read it. I recognize member Char.
Uh, I guess motion to adopt.
Thank you very much. Do we have a second at this time? Member Kwanu, are you seconding or bringing something up?
I know, I was gonna bring up that I'm gonna vote no against this, so say.
Okay. We'll do that, we'll do that session. We'll do that on a session. There is a second at this time. Uh, we do have a second from member Peck. Thank you very much. Richard Kwanu, you're recognized at this time.
Yeah, I think this would discourage participation. So say I have a job and I wanna run. And yeah, so you know, I think there's gonna be an unintended consequence of discouraging participation. So say if, if somebody's a lawyer, they wanna run for the House, the Senate, whatever. Is this motion saying they have to quit being a lawyer and just be a city council person or a senator or Congress or a representative?
Thank you very much. I recognize member Carson at this time.
This applies only to the city council, and I would note that most people who have, um, full-time day jobs, uh, such as teachers or doctors, um, couldn't keep a second job anyway. Um, so this mostly applies to people who do, um, second jobs that are especially, um, uh, you know, susceptible to improper influence. Um, as, you know, most people who have a full-time job would have to resign that position in order to be a city council member, considering the fact that it's year-round and high demand.
Thank you very much. Um, I can't see anyone else who's raised their hands currently. Do you?
Person, member Farden.
I recognize member Farden at this time.
Thank you, Chair. I do understand the intent of the resol, but I will also be voting, um, not to support this resolution. Again, I understand the intent of it, but I think it may be a little bit short-sighted, especially for those that may have service within the National Guard, or doesn't take into consideration, um, other states that have dual employment restrictions for elected officials. Many of them have parameters that they cannot take a second job if that second job is so much percentage of their first job or priority job. Or again, if they're in the National Guard or a first responder of some sort or teaching. So I think, again, this is a little bit short-sighted. The intent is there, but I think it needs to be reworked and come back to the board, um, in a better form. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I recognize member Fujinaka.
Uh, yes, I also agree with, um, member Farden, um, on this resolution. I, I think it does set a precedent because I, I, I may, correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe there are some elected legislators that are also holding second jobs. So if we're gonna hold the fire to the council, are we also holding the fire to our states and federal legislators?
Thank you very much. I do believe member Carson clarified that second point there. Uh, do we have any other hands raised by the board's members? I recognize Carson at this time.
I'm sorry, I didn't even mean to have my hand raised, but since you recognize me, I guess I would just say that this doesn't apply in any way to, um, any other office but city council. Um, and I'd also say that personally, I would recommend any friendly amendments to improve the resolution by making exceptions for the National Guard. Um, just my opinion, but.
Uh, I'm just gonna step in on that point. Um, National Guard by definition would not apply in this case. It's federal law supersets. Okay, I think we've had a robust discussion. Oh, please, you're recognized at this time.
Can I just, uh, ask, uh, statistics about how many existing city council members have second jobs? I mean, what is the average salary of them?
Thank you very much. Uh, I'm, as chair, gonna step in right now, uh, recently, and this is what, uh, spurred this discussion. The board had a discussion on whether to, uh, to oppose, which it did. The, uh, 64% salary raise for city council members, so I believe $109,000 a year effective July 1st. Um, in response to that, uh, the chair and the vice chair of the council put forward a resolution to ban second jobs to go pardon, uh, go hand-in-hand with the raises. And that's what started the discussion. I do not know exactly how many current members do have second jobs, though. Good question. Any further discussion? I believe, uh, Claire Santos is her hand recognized. I recognize meeting member Santos.
Uh, thank you, Chair. Um, point of fact, doctors, nurses, teachers, many of us have side hustles. We're not restricted to one job, and I don't think anyone should be restricted. I could see putting a percentage parameter of how much time it takes. Um, but I don't agree with severe restrictions that you may and may not. It's just, it's just not American. Uh, but I wanted to, you know, clarify that, that a lot of us are working two and three jobs, and some people actually function better that way. So to give a rigid restriction just seems too extreme. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Logan, can you confirm if anyone else has a hand up?
Uh, yeah, no worries. I don't believe so.
You can just. All right, okay, looks like we have no further discussion at this point. Uh, let's do a well-called, Logan, you please.
Absolutely. So the current motion on the table is to adopt the resolution supporting the banning of second jobs for Honolulu City Council members. Motion was made by Vice Chair Char and seconded by Third Vice Chair Peck. Baldwin. Carson.
Yay. Yes.
Thank you. Char?
Aye.
Farden.
Aye.
All right, was that a nay?
De, nay.
Thank you. Fujinaka?
Nay.
Kwanu?
No.
Clink?
Abstain.
Kojima?
No.
Laka Laka Manapuna? Lee?
No.
Nakamoto?
No.
Park?
No.
Peck? Sorry? Fine, thank you. Salassa? Steel Quest?
No.
Ross?
Yes.
Uh, motion does not pass with four ayes, eight nays, and two abstentions.
All right, thank you very much for the robust discussion. Move on to the next item on the agenda, collision at the intersection of Prospect Street and Alibi Street. Uh, do we have any further discussion at this time? I believe at our last meeting, we received a presentation. Uh, I'm gonna recognize member Claire Santos, oh, sorry, pardon me, former member, uh, she was at the opening line session, uh, Claire Santos at this time.
My big two weeks on the board. Um, I presented at our condo board meeting that the, the, uh, business of adding two stop signs at this fatal intersection and in my discussions with neighbors, they're pretty disgusted that that was six months of engineers evaluating the situation to come up with two stop signs and some sort of flashing light signed by Tyler Dos Santos, Tom, Tom, in the middle of a residential area. So at this moment, the neighborhood's not happy about it, but what I did to mitigate was say, we're trying to get another meeting at Stevenson, um, for community input to that awkward decision, and I'm not even having an opinion about it right now. It's just blowing my mind. So I hope the board is going through with trying to get another meeting at Stevenson with those engineers and, uh, talk this thing through about what would be the best solution for that intersection. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you very much, uh, for your input there. Do we have any other, uh, any further discussion about this at this time? Hearing none, um, as chair, I'm gonna continue to work to go, pardon me, did we get a hand up? Uh, as chair, I'm gonna continue to work with our council members to try to get another Stevenson meeting so we can have the appropriate stakeholders and residents in a room to be able to discuss things with the engineers and to evaluate this further, and then we'll report back to the board when we hear more. Moving on, neighborhood tour with council member Calvin Seh. Is the council member with us at this time?
Yes, Ian, I'm here.
Thank you so much for joining us. Sorry for the long meeting.
No, no, it's all right. Uh, I think, uh, my staff, Brandon, did. No, no, it's all right. Uh, I think my staff, Brandon, did contact you in regards to the different areas, so I'll be happy to organize it if the board members would like to attend. And I truly wish that the new board members would attend, because these particular areas will be areas where the old timers have discussed the issues that we have addressed in the past.
All right, while you're speaking with us, I'll show up what uh show what Brandon has generated as potential first bit of tour of the district. Um, I think it's some really good sites there, and I think it's a pretty doable. Uh, assuming it's not too hot, it wouldn't be particularly arduous, I I would hope. Um, but there are some locations here for new members. You might not recognize all these points, but these have been discussed at previous meetings as points of interest, and uh thank you very much to you and uh your staff for putting this together. There was also some proposed dates and times.
Fine.
I think the appropriate to do is maybe for me to work with Logan to email the board a poll, and then we can get back to you on.
Okay, that'll be fine. So Brandon's aware of it, and uh we'll follow up with your requests. Okay, Logan?
Sir, please go ahead.
Nope.
All right. Well, thank you so much to you and your staff for putting this together.
You're very welcome. Thank you very much.
We're getting a discussion from the board at this time about uh Councilmember Say's office helping to organize a walk around the district to look at some of the areas of concern. I recognize Member Fujinaka.
I would um like to say thank you to Councilmember Say for putting this together. I think this would be a really good opportunity for us to get more engagement from uh, of course, the constituency, so I do wanna support it um a- as well as try to get some of our board members to also participate with you on this. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
I recognize Member Nakamoto at this time.
Councilmember Say, thank you very much.
Hi, Harris.
Uh, sure, we'd like to, we'd like to uh participate, so thank you. Good idea.
Thank you very much.
So it's, oh, I recognize Steelquest.
Thank you so much. Glad to have you do it.
Thank you very much, John. Nice to see you again.
Yeah.
So as Chair, one of the things we'll be doing is polling which board members wanna go. We have to be sure not to have quorum or that be a violation of the neighborhood plan. We also have to be careful of discussions on potential board action here, but this is a good chance for us all to evaluate problems and concerns in the district that we can then bring back to a public forum for discussion. All right, thank you very much. We'll move forward on the agenda on that. Um, all right, that finishes unfinished bit, unfinished business. We can move on to state elected official reports, starting with Governor Josh King's representative, Jai Cunningham. Is Mr. Cunningham there?
Yes, sir. I'm trying to get the camera on, and I'm having a difficulty with that. So if if it's okay, I'll just continue with just the audio if you guys can hear me.
Not sure.
Wait, maybe I might, I might have had it. Hang on one second.
There you go.
I'm wearing the highly reflective vest because it's still cool in my office, so just to let you know, the fire department would be thrilled for me biking in this highly reflective vest. And just uh earlier, I know that um someone had mentioned the rumble strips when you come off of Kenau. Um, just to let you know, and I, I, some people probably get thrilled out of this. They're called thermal plastic rumble strips. So they're actually a a plastic that's put down. So people have asked us uh if they're metal or not, because they do make quite a bit of noise. If you've been on Nimitz Highway headed towards Costco, um, those rumble strips are horizontal reminders of the turn that's upcoming, so the, I should say the yes, with the vertical signage. So um we've put those up in a number of places. If you've gone out to the airport lately, um, in the exit, uh getting on, if you're going uh westbound, the exit there, it has a number of those thermal uh plastic rumble strips. So just to let you guys know what that is, we put those up as part of the safety plan we've had since uh twenty nineteen, and those include the speed humps, the the raised crosswalks, um, all the different things that we've sort of put into place, no, no right turn on red at certain intersections. Um, a number of different things that we put in place to try and uh eliminate the conflict between bicycles, pedestrians, and vehicles uh that that can be quite prominent in town and in other locations. We've, we've put the the uh speed humps in a number of different locations on our our neighbor islands as well. Um, I guess the big news this week was, thank goodness, we dodged a bullet um with Tropical Storm Calvin. Um, we did have uh the state EOC set up as well as Hawaii Island. Um, I guess the 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 thought about it was, at the end here, when we sort of recapped it, was uh while it wasn't necessarily a uh a very impactful storm, it was sort of very good practice for all of the different agencies to sort of coordinate um and that that sort of thing. As far as our neighborhood border area, um, we've had a number with the rain this week that was sort of associated with Calvin. We had a number of rainouts for that paving project on the H1 freeway uh that closes nightly from uh Punahoe all the way to uh uh the Punho Street off-ramp all the way to the uh Kapilani interchange. That's been off a couple of weeks, I mean, not a couple of weeks, a couple of days. Um, so that was sort of affected by the weather, um but that should be back on, hopefully, if we get drier weather uh overnight with the closures and the detour that leads from uh uh the Punho off-ramp by Kapilani Medical Center all the way down towards uh King Street by the Humane Society. So that continues. Um, that's kind of all I have, and obviously, I'm here also to take any questions that uh uh board members may have or concerns they may have, or or anyone else who uh from the general public who has any concerns. Go right ahead.
Thank you very much. I'm gonna limit the concerns for these report sections to three from board members forced open to the public. And then in the additional questions, I would recommend people email you, and I'll make sure everyone gets the emails for the appropriate answers. Just saying that as we're officially now running late. All right, uh, any questions from board members at this time? Seeing done, thank you very much for your report. I'm just happy as you are that we dodged the vote with the the um hurricane. See you next month.
Thank you, Chair Ross. And then also, I did send you the newsletter for, from Governor's Office for, for the month of July.
Thank you very much. It is in the uh, it's in the drive, so it's accessible to anyone who would like to be your guide. Thank you for the report.
Thank you, guys.
All right, we're gonna move on to Senator Kero Fukunaga's office.
Good evening, Chair Ross. Claire Roncola for Senator Fukunaga this evening. Um, so as I emailed yesterday um to you folks, was a memo update regarding a town hall meeting community survey that was distributed to community members who attended Representative Bellotti's Town Hall Meeting on June twenty-eight and twenty twenty-three. So in that memo for members of the public, um, we broke down the results of like the questions that we had implemented into our survey. So questions included, what issues are you most concerned about in Honolulu? Options were homelessness, which was twelve percent, um, cost of living, ten percent, housing, seven percent, other miscellaneous concerns, seven percent, and increasing community policing presence, five percent. The next question was, what issues are you most concerned about in Makiki? Um, fourteen percent said homeless encroaching in public areas, crime, ten percent, pedestrian safety, seven percent, insufficient public parking, six percent, traffic, five percent, and other miscellaneous concerns. And the final question on that survey was which of these choices would you be most willing to support? Um, twelve percent said they were willing to support supportive housing for homeless families and seniors with special needs on both state and county lands, providing community mental health crisis clinics in the neighborhood, eleven percent had said they were willing to support that, and creating urban rest stops or hygiene centers such as the ones in Evilay for the homeless, and five percent said they would support that. In addition to the materials I was shared to you, the board members, we also wanted to provide our update on condo legislation for Makiki and Punch Bowl. So on July three, twenty twenty-three, the governor had enacted Act one ninety-nine, which was originally SB eight-six-five, which was titled relating to condominium reserve requirements. Um, so in short, it authorizes condo associations to include fire safety improvements, which are within the categories of repairs and maintenance to upgrades uh of such. The next one was Senate Concurrent Resolution forty-eight, which requests the Department or Department of Consumer Commerce and Consumer Affairs to compile pertinent data to determine the appropriate scope of analyzing whether implementing laws such similar to Massachusetts State's captive insurance laws could address skyrocketing residential condo insurance premiums. Um, and the last one was Act one eighty-nine that was enacted by the governor on July fifth, which was originally HB fifteen oh nine, which was titled relating to common interest developments. In short, it wanted it was to establish a Plan Community Association Oversight Task Force to examine the rights afforded to owners and condo property regimes and determine feasibility of extending any of those rights to members, Plan Community Association, and whatnot. Any questions from board members or members of the public?
Good to see you in the setting. Uh, we were just working across from each other not too long ago. I feel like a cat.
Next door.
Yes. Uh, so I went ahead for everyone who's in attendance. I put both of the documented reference into the Google Drive. I recognize Member Carson at this time.
Yes, um, I was wondering if you could explain how the results of the survey fell so far below one hundred percent, even low fifty percent on some questions. Were you counting blanks, or are there other choices that weren't listed, or if you could just explain that for us?
So from what I could recall, only sixteen people had um participated in doing the surveys, and we didn't really give them a specific set of instructions, so there were cases where a lot of participants had just like filled out everything, so that kind of just like pulled everything down, so it's not really accurate per se. If that kind of makes sense.
You're saying that they shanked every, they checked every box, so you disregarded the response?
No, they just checked out. Yeah, so we just counted, so like we tallied it up. So reality, whereas it's like, might say twelve percent, it's actually twelve people checked off that specific box out of like the sixteen participants. So
Okay.
That makes sense.
Thank you for that clarification. I recognize Member Quano at this time.
I apologize. I wasn't there when I was, um, another member of our staff was there distributing those surveys, so I wasn't really too sure what happened.
Yes, Claire, and Ian, cut me off after three minutes, because this is a, you know, um, our fire insurance went up ten times. Since uh ten times since we had a fire back in twenty nineteen. And also, so that's had a huge impact. I think some people have already moved out, but that's not the only thing. The other thing is the city's unfunded mandates of all these reserve funds, which I know well, have the best of intentions. Uh, but uh, I'm about, I'm seventy-three, I'm about to retire, and my wife and I are talking about the real issue of if we afford to stay here. We've been here since nineteen seventy-five. Uh, our maintenance fees have more than doubled since twenty nineteen. And uh now we're being told from our managing agent that with the new uh mandates for all these other reserve funds, if, yeah, we're really concerned about whether we can afford to stay here, and and this is someplace that we're, this is our uh this is gonna be our retirement, our retirement home. You know, we've lived here for a long time, and we had no intention of moving, but we may be priced out of our home here.
Right.
Yeah, it's, it's a, you know, the city with the best of intentions, but you got, you know, the, even the city doesn't hold itself to the fire that you're holding condos to as far as all the, you know, the financial obligations you have. If you folks were to do that to yourselves, you'd have to raise taxes to an unacceptable level, and that's what's happening to condo owners in a lot of places here. Making the maintenance fees go so high up, it's becoming unmanageable.
So we're just hoping that um one of the bills that was passed this recent session would help address that, or at least put, just like open a pathway to like other potential solutions, but this is just the start of it, and I, from my understanding, this has been like an ongoing issue, especially with the incident with like the Marco Polo. Um, yeah, the Marco Polo incident a couple of years ago. But I have your concerns noted, and I'll take it back to Senator Fukunaga.
All right, thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you very much for your report. I'm not seeing any other hands raised at this time, uh, so we look forward to seeing you again next time.
Thank you.
All right, we'll move on to Representative Della Albelotti. Tom Heinrich, you're recognized.
Okay, thank you, Chair. Thank you, everyone. Uh, Tom Heinrich, on behalf of Representative Della Bellotti. Uh, and we certainly extend our congratulations to all of you for being elected to serve uh for the twenty-three to twenty-five term of the Makiki Neighborhood Board, uh and appreciate your willingness to represent your community. Uh, as you know, I've got a few years in the system myself, uh and look forward to working with some of you. Uh, and Chuck Lee, you're not going far, uh, so I look forward to working with you. Uh, anyway, at the beginning of the meeting, so way at the, up at the top of the chat, uh, I copied in Representative Bellotti's contact information, uh, so feel free at any time to give us a holler uh by phone or by email. Uh, this is interim, but it is a very busy time, and increasingly so. Uh, as you just heard from Claire, uh, there's a lot of stuff that we are working on together, uh, especially as it relates to homelessness, uh, mental health issues. Um, uh, Representative Bellotti and members of the House Health Committee, in fact, are doing a uh series of site visits this coming Monday, Tuesday on Big Island. Um, there's uh other uh site visits statewide uh that she is working on trying to schedule, uh particularly as it relates to a number of specific issues relating to uh mental health. Um, let's see. Wanna keep this short, so let me just move down here uh to second something that Jai Cunningham especially uh reported on. Uh, thank goodness to Mauna Kea and Mauna Loa uh for its ripping apart uh Tropical Storm Calvin. Uh, if you watch things on the weather.hawaii.edu site, which especially has some of the satellite imagery. Uh, you know, once again, Big Island served very well in taking the brunt, but ripping apart the storm uh for the rest of us, so we were, we're very lucky in that way. However, uh, there were a number of constituents that did contact us, uh, and we took a look at certain sites uh and reported them relating to stream or drainage ditch conditions in our district, uh, in this neighborhood board district, uh, or very close by, particularly anywhere along Kanaha Stream and Makiki Stream, ultimately becoming Makiki Ditch, uh, Mackay of South King Street. There are certain areas that are heavily overgrown and do need to be dredged by the city and county, uh, because unfortunately, most of that burden falls to the Department of Facility Maintenance, comma, Division of Road Maintenance, which has one crew island-wide, uh, because it has the heavy equipment in order to be able to do that type of dredging uh and um removal of uh soil and rocks uh uh and heavy vegetation. Uh, so as you walk this district, uh, please be attentive to things like that. Let us know uh so that we can communicate it in the right directions uh and try to put those things on schedule. Um, let's see, the last quick thing that I'll mention uh is we are now fully in the interim period. Uh, again, uh, the regular session wrapped up on May four, uh, but just last week, July eleven was the final deadline for the governor to either sign bills into law or veto them, uh, or allow them to become law uh without his signature. Um, I don't have this right in front of me, but as I recall, there were eleven bills that were vetoed, uh, and the decision by the House and Senate ultimately was to not come into special session to consider potentially overriding those vetoes or uh uh dealing with the objections uh of the governor to those bills. Uh, so any further formal work will be done starting in January, uh, but there is ongoing research and preparation now uh with the governor's office uh in order to try to address uh some of those concerns. Um, and then lastly, I do call your attention to uh, I believe it's Act one six-four, but uh look it up as House Bill three hundred. That is the state budget. Uh, the governor did do a Uh, the governor did do a series of line item vetoes, uh, in the state budget. Uh, but otherwise, everything else stands with that. And certainly we will talk about more detail later. Uh, in terms of some of the financial issues, but also some of the capital improvement project, uh, investments, uh, in this district. So let me stop there, but any questions, uh, feel free now or certainly to contact us here in the office, uh, and we'll get back to you. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you very much, Tom. I'm going to, uh, recognize questions from the board first and then questions from other attendees. Does anyone from the board have a question at this time? Okay, seeing none. Thank you very much for your report and we look forward to seeing you again.
Okay, thank you, members.
Okay, we're going to move on to the city and county of Honolulu elected official report. Oh, sorry, I almost skipped one. Pardon me. Representative Andrew Garrett, thank you so much for joining us this evening. Good to see you.
Almost hurt my feelings there, Chair. No, quite all right, quite all right. Um, yeah, just in the interest of time, much like Tom said, congratulations to all the new and returning members of the. Makiki Neighborhood Board. Uh, just for the edification of the newer members in particular. House District Twenty-two that I represent is primarily Manoa, but it does include, uh, East Townless. So unfortunately with reapportionment. As you folks know, Townless was cut in half. So Representative Bellotti does have the western half. I have basically the Round Top Drive portion up to Forest Ridge Way, just as a point of reference. Um, I'm going to drop my newsletter into the chat box. This was sent out to the district about a month or so ago. Just wanted to, uh, call your attention to the QR code that links to our community survey. If you are a, um. Constituent of mine in District Twenty-two, I encourage you to fill that out. We are going to share the results with the district in a few months. Um, the uptake hasn't been as, uh, robust as I was hoping, but again, if you're in District Twenty-two, encourage you to complete that survey. Um, if you don't have access to, um. Like, um, electronic device, for whatever reason, we can mail you a hard copy as well. If you just call our office and that's also included there on the newsletter. So with that, again, in the interest of time, I'll stop and see if anyone has any questions.
Representative, I went ahead and already just now shared your newsletter in our Google Drive as well to make it easily accessible for attendees. Do you have any questions from board members at this time? All right, seeing none. Uh, any questions from any other attendees? Okay, seeing none. Thank you so much for joining us and thank you for your newsletter.
See you next month. Thank you.
All right, we'll now, uh, move on to city and county of Honolulu elected official monthly report, starting with City Councilmember Calvin Say.
Thank you very much, Chair Ross, and to all the board members, congratulations. I'll be very brief. My report is in the chat. That's number one. And number two, there is an event this coming Saturday that. I think Tom Heinrich and I would be a part of, and that's the Blue Zone Get Together at Stadium Park. It is basically informational booths, good health promotions and demonstrations, and also some of our food trucks. For this capital improvement project, ten forty-five Young Street Fire Headquarters, we're about fifty percent done. The emergency repairs in the vicinity of four, forty-one twenty Round Top Drive. Phase one and two, we are at a ninety percent of the project done. And finally, there's also another appropriation. That we have done, and that was the Townless Drive roadway and crib wall repairs in the vicinity of thirty-seven ninety-eight. And that amount was about six point four million, and that has not started yet to proceed. Also, we did have to reprogram the Cartwright Park. Burnlet project to the Manoa District Park parking lot. Uh, that's great for, uh. All of us. Then we have the fourteen twenty-one Pensacola Street status. For the new members of the board, the fourteen twenty-one Pensacola Street status is the. Home that has been burnt twice and is sitting there. As a health hazard, and I think a lot of residents know about it. But we are working with the Department of Design and Construction. And the Corporation Council is seeing that we get it done within the next year and a half. Then, uh, I think Richard brought up the issue and, uh, Claire. That's in regards to the fire sprinkler information system that we're trying to get. Different associations. And I, and I apologize, Richard, you're correct. That I've heard from a lot of families at, uh. All families. Is it apartments, condominiums and residential homes? Homeowners insurance has gone up tremendously. And the reason why is what has happened on the mainland. And the east coast primarily Florida and other areas where they've been highly impacted by the climate change that has occurred. And that's where I think members and the general public should be aware. I think the legislature has done a great job with the support of Andrew and. Della and Carol and Sharon Moriwaki. That, uh, we are trying our best and trying to see how we can relieve homeowners. And it's been difficult. You have the fireside needing the fire sprinkler system. Then you have the insurance side with climate change. It just adds up to more costs to the general public at large. Other than that, uh, I'll be happy to answer any questions that you may have. And I really enjoyed. This evening's, uh, discussion that the board, new board members and. Old board members have had with the general public at large. So thank you very much.
Members, always thank you so much. I'll open this up to questions from board members and then from all other attendees. Any questions from board members at this? Uh, I do have one brief question. We did have, uh, a discussion pre, just today voting down on. Uh, banning of seconds jobs. Is that resolution still alive and moving through the city council?
I believe so. It is still alive and, uh. We'll wait to see what really happens at this point in time. You know, sometimes for all of us, which I've learned this past two and a half years. And I think you folks are a part of it is that because of the sunshine law. It's only two council members can talk to each other without sharing what they're planning to do. And that's where then it creates to me a little distrust. Why not share with us like how the state legislature talks to a lot of other members at the same time, but. Just two members and then you have the two of them that, you know. Submitted a resolution to oppose the raise and then you have two of them. That said, if we're going to accept the raise, we have to be full time. And that's where we don't have that kind of a personal interaction that I would love to see. If we had the opportunity of repealing the sunshine law for the city council. Fascinating.
All right. There's an interesting concern. Being on the neighborhood board, I think, uh, our veteran members are quite familiar. So thank you. We can relate. Uh, thank you for that. Any questions from any other attendees?
Uh, Ian, oh, I just have one, one comment.
Absolutely.
I'm, I'm very saddened to hear, Richard, that, you know, you're considering living Hawaii because this is your home. And I, I can understand because, uh, we all do as far as what. Who was it that said it the best? I am Tongi. I was probably, I was priced out of paradise. And, you know, that's the difficulty that we face today that, uh, we're, everybody's trying their best as public officials, but. How do you control the cost of living with inflation going up, with interest rates going up, da, 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 da? And now what's happening in Ukraine, you're going to see our flower as far as, uh. With pastries and breads, et cetera, going sky high based on the embargo by the Russian government with the Ukraine. Uh. Wheat that they always exported throughout the world. So. It's a concern, but, uh, I, I always say this to all of you. Lucky we live Hawaii.
Absolutely. Wonderful note to end on. Thank you so much for your report and we'll get back to you about the walkabout. If we don't see you before the meeting there, we'll see you at the next meeting.
Okay, though.
All right, thank you so much. Uh, next up, City Councilmember Tyler, uh, Dos Santos Tam. Do we have a representative from the office today or himself?
Yes, yes, that is me, Robin Henskey. Um, so I just wanted to say, uh, just a little recap. We had our Doyle Park cleanup on July eighth. I think it was a success. Uh, um, Chair Ross was able to make it. And a bunch of volunteer make, uh, rejuvenize. So that was very, that was a great event. So I appreciate everyone who attended. Um, one request that we had from the community that called in to our office was a, a property at fourteen twenty-one Pensacola Street. Um, we learned recently that that, the city plans on, um, condemning the property. Um, so it's in the, it's in preliminary steps. Um, so once it happens, once it's demolished. Oh, sorry?
No, no, sorry, I was just.
Oh, yeah, but once, once it is demolished, it, uh, the, the plan is to convert it to affordable housing. What that looks like. We don't know yet, but as soon as we do have an idea, I will definitely update the board. Um, and as it relates to, um, Paul's. Uh, um, Paul's concern about feral chickens, we're still on it. We were able to, um, contact, um. CSD today, Customer Services Department at the city. And, um, there's, again, there's two programs, the city property program and the city loner program. Uh, the city property program, um. Has a, a vendor that can enter any city property and remove the chickens. Um, that program is up and running. It has been since June nineteenth. Um, there isn't kind of any outcomes yet as far as how successful it has been. On removed, like what, what the population looks like now as a result of the program, but we will still. Keep you updated on, on what, on how successful it is. The second is the city loner program, as I mentioned. Which is, um, a trap that the landowner can rent and then provide back to the vendor for, um. Disposal, unfortunately, but, um, that has not, the contract is not out yet. So that has not happened yet, but as soon as it does. I'll update everyone. Um, and as far as, um, the Prospect Five Way Stop intersection. Um, I know it's kind of, it's gone back and forth on what solutions are possible. I think, um, DTS proposed the five-way stop is more of a, or the bean about we, uh. Earlier on, but, um, if there's a community meeting in the future, our office will definitely, um, participate and. Keep us updated on whatever you guys, uh, decide to go with that. So that's my report. If you guys need anything, I'm here.
Thank you so much. I recognize, uh, member Fubinaga at this time.
Uh, thank you so much. Um, and thank you for your report. Um, I had a question. Um, I might be a little naive on this, um. Topic issue, but the five-way Prospect Stop. Um, I'm a little confused as to it because it was brought up earlier to. Uh, that has typically been, uh. Two-way stop, but then, um, the street that's intersecting, which is Prospect. That, why would we want to make that a four-way stop? Because then what about the rest of the streets? Like, is that something that the. Planning Department is trying to look at or the council members are trying to look at? Mitigating the, the situation with traffic and incidents in that area?
Yes, so we were able to do, um, a site visit with actually Claire Santos, um, newly elected board member. And, um, we kind of went on the, the ground level. We kind of assessed everything, any signs that were missing or, uh, parking. Uh, that could be potentially eliminated to create more space, um, in the area, but, uh, we reported back to DTS. Um, and they did, um, kind of a study there to see if a five-way stop could be implemented. And it seems it's feasible. Um, and I think a month or two back, um. A Kel, Kelly Osaka from DTS made like a, a tiny presentation on, you know, next steps moving forward. As a five-way stop, um, solution, but still we're, we're. And correspond with them if, if that's kind of. It concretely the way that we're going. And I said, um, you know, it's not. It's not concrete in the community. There's some questions about it. So if there's, um, if this has to be a process and we have to bring DTS to the table, that's something that we're willing to help facilitate. Definitely, yeah.
Uh, thank you so much.
Third question from, uh, oh, here we go. I do see Claire's hand up. Uh, Claire, we recognize you at this time.
Thank you, Chair. Just really quickly for Janelle's benefit. It's a five-way intersection with three stop signs and. We were hoping, there were multiple problems there with, with, uh, a wall that's been condemned and, and parking on stop signs. There were multiple ways to make that safer. So we're appalled at this point that. The entire solution is adding two stop signs. Um, and that's why we want further discussion with DTS to make the entire intersection safer and. Uh, not just a Band-Aid on a bleeding wound. Thank you, Chair.
Uh, thank you very much. I will ask, uh, um, Claire Santos, if you could, it's always helpful to have, uh, boards like this weigh in on things. If you have a resolution or a letter or something like that. I think that's something which can be really concrete with the neighborhood board can then, you know, also potentially weigh in on. Something that can be brought back and would be very actionable potentially as well.
I'm not clear. Were you requesting something from me?
Yes, you're representing the position of your condo association. And I know that you're a very good representative of the group you're with, but. Something in writing can potentially be very concrete and actionable as well.
I'll, I'll approach the board. Thank you. Okay.
Robin, do you have any further response?
So what was that? I'm sorry.
Uh, I believe, uh, Claire was, uh, speaking on the five-way intersection. I just wanted to see if you wanted to respond.
Oh, I mean, uh, yeah, I mean, there's the open dialogue back and forth and if, um. I mean, the neighbors live there in the day to day and they're experiencing these crashes and unsafe conditions. So, um, bringing those. Concerns to the department, um, in, in a community meeting, I think is appropriate. So. I definitely hear her concerns and everyone's concerns and, uh, council members really passionate about making that intersection a lot safer. So, um. Any help that you guys can provide is really appreciated. So thank you for your patience. I know there's been. A lot of tragedies, um, for, for a number of years now. And so we're really trying to work on it. So I appreciate you guys a lot.
All right. Thank you so much, Robin. I appreciate the updates on all of this. Uh, with that, uh, we're, uh, we're going to move on in the agenda. Um, so next up, we do have a new representative from Mayor Rick Belangiardi, Ben Sullivan. He is, uh, Deputy Director of the City and County of Honolulu's Office of Climate Change Sustainability and Resiliency. I looked some things up about him online. He describes himself as an amateur data, uh, data nerd. Uh, though I know he's quite a bit better than that. He's also a leader in clean energy for Hawaii. Brings a lot of local government utilities and building industry experience. And in full disclosure, I did once intern for him. Uh, Ben, thank you so much for being our representative from the mayor's office.
Thank you, Chair Ross. Uh, thank you, members of the board. Really appreciate the opportunity to represent Baron here and learn more about the initiative at the, at the PD area level. Um, I am, I'm almost the president of your district. I'm about a hundred yards away from Jigsaw. But, but happy to be here in the discussion and learn more. I'm going to be very brief because I think I'm the last one in here. I'll probably need to get out of here, but, um. Some of the updates from the mayor's office, I'm just going to give you the headlines and please know that you can get more information at www dot oneohualu dot org. Forward slash newsletter. Um, obviously rail service celebrating the opening of that. What's, you know, really important thing, some other comments that were made earlier, tax relief for homeowners and FY twenty-four budget. So, um, there's fifty-three million dollars in potential tax relief that comes to three hundred fifty-dollar tax credit for those who qualify. On the, uh, budget fiscal services provided. Further information about tax relief, saying that the, the change is that. Um, previously you had to have an income of sixty thousand dollars or lower. And it's now been raised to eighty thousand dollars. So that's an available piece of relief for these high, high costs that we all talked about and understand well. Um, because there wasn't a board water supply representative in the meeting today, I just want to mention that they are interested in meeting with the board. They have a, a regular five-year review of their rate schedule that is coming up and they're interested in getting the board's time for considerable, considerable chunk of time, perhaps twenty to thirty minutes. Review that in the next couple of months. I just want to flag that for the board as something to consider. Um. There's lots of other things here, but again, in the interest of time, I'm going to be very brief. The two items that were, um, follow-up items from last time, I, I want to just let the board. Recognize that I'm not familiar with these because I'm coming into, but I just want to reference what I have in front of me, which is that. The first one was parking along Pensacola Street and Honolulu Streets. And, uh, the concern was about the construction and about the potential for construction workers maybe closing off spaces that weren't for them. And I can say that the action from HPD was that specifically from June ninth to twenty-three. Um, this, the district one officers made regular checks of the area and noted the issue. They did not observe any parking violations. They did also, um, confirm with DTS and with Fly Electric and others that they had the necessary permits for the areas that were blocked off. Um, they also actually took the step of speaking with the contractors in the area and, and basically got their assurance that their employees would park properly. So I think what you're hearing here is that they're doing everything they can to, to help you with this issue and it's understood that it's an important issue. Um, there are several other items of known here, but the, the, the other, the, the second item that I will note, I think it's maybe a. Certainly an important item, but, but. There's less text on it here. It's no parking sign replacement project along, you know, street. So. I guess there was a resident inquiry at last meeting. It's not familiar to the folks that were on the board previously about the, you know, the, the. The non-readable signs, um, between. Warren and Peaco on Pinau Street. And so the Department of Facility Management, really, I think they're probably looking for more specificity because their response was really to say, hey, look, use the Honolulu 311 app or email DFMroads@Honolulu.gov. And so perhaps there's an opportunity for someone to take a photo or otherwise really make it as specific as you can about the signage so they can respond. So the, so the email to reach them is DFMroads@Honolulu.gov. And that concludes my report, happy to answer questions if I can. Thank you very much for the kind interview.
Thank you very much. So we do have a few questions for you, and I now remembered it was Tom Heinrich who brought up this part. So I'll confer with Tom Heinrich, this is related to concerns on South Ferentzina related to the backups during rush hour. So I'll confer with him and get, and report this in the app that you mentioned. But opening is up to questions, our first question this evening is from Member Carson.
Yeah, I just wanted to thank you and the city and the city government for the excellent job everyone did this year putting on summer fun. Not everything in government works, but this is something that works. And when you think about the effort that goes into getting something like that set up only for the summer at so many parks, hiring all the staff, training them, making it work, getting the summer plus vendors in, signing, doing all those field trips that they do, and then providing it at the price you guys provide it for, I am just in awe. I mean, that is government at its best, that is what all government should aspire to be. And I, the website didn't crash this year, we didn't have to wait in line unless we wanted to. I mean, the improvements that you've made to the program are amazing. And I think it's just great that you're providing this employment opportunity and leadership opportunity for our teens. And I, I attended the finale performance yesterday and the mayor was kind enough to send a representative, I believe from your office, who gave a speech at the beginning and everyone was so excited. And I, they were excited about their government and they were excited about what, what the service that was being provided by, by the city, so I just want you to know that. And yeah, it was just, I rarely have felt like such a member of the community as I did in that room with all of my neighbors and, you know, all these families that I recognized from the neighborhood, all there to celebrate their keiki. So just want to thank the city and please report that to the mayor.
Thank you, that's very, very kind.
I don't know about that one, my mic is still on.
Very, very kind and you really appreciate it. I know the Parks Department really works hard and I can, I can say by having attended last night as well that it's clear that community members are very, very interested and enjoy it. They, it was long history of enjoying that program, a lot of their kids, so thank you.
All right, excellent, we have a question now from Chuck Lee.
Yes, thank you, Chair. Hi, Ben, I just was wondering if you could find out when striping of the crosswalks are going to be done? There's a lot of crosswalks, not only in our Makiki Punch Bowl Townless area, that are really, really faded. There's some that you can hardly see it. And, and the other one is about the striping, the red striping of the curbs. It's, it's almost completely faded too, so people are starting to park in those red curb areas. And I don't know if it's because they can't see it or if they just want to get, get away with it because they're not getting tagged because it's not clearly marked red. The crosswalk issue is, is one of big safety, and I was just wondering if you could look into those two things and get back to us next week, next meeting.
Oh, please go ahead. Chuck, do you have any specific spots that you're talking about? I know you said Makiki area, but in order for something to really be actionable where we can get a concrete response, do you have any specific intersections or curbs that you're talking about?
You know, I, I walk the area and I don't always get my bearings, but I know there's one on right by Roosevelt High School on Nejua and the crossroad that goes up past Roosevelt or the mountain. That one is almost completely faded, you can't even see the crosswalk. The only way you can tell this is a crosswalk is there's the, you know, the no walking sign there. But in, in Pensacola, as far as the red striping, it's all faded already, all in Pensacola. And I mean, I can email you later, more specific areas, but I see those things going downhill really fast. And I know it's not only in Makiki, it's all over the city, but I'm mainly concerned about Makiki, of course.
Yeah, sure, so I got Roosevelt High School, Memua Street, and then the red curb. And red curb striking, striping along Pensacola Street.
Yeah.
And then, and then if you have any additional ones checked, be sure to send me an email and I'll get those included as well.
Yes, I will. Thank you, Ben.
Thank you, Chair, appreciate that. And as a vice, I can, I can refer with you about how much I always appreciate the green paint from the green paint that is in the light lanes because it makes me feel safer, so thanks for that, thanks for that.
All right, well, something got under the radar a little bit earlier. It was mentioned about there's actually some action from the City and County on 1421 Pensacola Street. We first sat down earlier in the month, I think that was one of the items I mentioned, there was this longstanding problem. If there is action, I will just speak up after the board that we'll be thrilled to see it. This has been the biggest thorn in our side of any single item on the agenda for a very long time. And I realize we kind of got back onto the five-way intersection, but please communicate to the mayor that this is probably the highest priority of the board besides the normal concerns about cost of living, crime and homelessness. It's a specific community issue, this is probably number one. So if there is action, thank you, Robin, for mentioning earlier, this is what the board is really interested in, please need to get that back in their office. Yeah, so we hear there's movement on foreclosure and that would be fantastic. The board will be absolutely. Okay, I don't see anything else, oh, please go ahead.
Here, transmit, transmit to the mayor. I attended one of his town hall meetings, it's about a month ago or two months ago. And I mentioned there are homeless people who live in their cars up near the nature center, up on Makiki Heights Drive. And, well, he put me in touch with HPD and I send emails every other day, but it's, it's just still, just still a problem. Nothing turns these guys from, continue to just park on the side of the road and just drop a trash. So just trying to.
Appreciate the challenge, thank you for noting it. And what, which meeting was, were you at?
This was at Aoi.
Oh, yes, I was down, okay, thank you very much.
All right, seeing no others, thank you for the report, we look forward to seeing you next month. Okay, would you have a few more items on the agenda? But I believe, I recognize John Steelquist at this time.
I recommend we have German.
We are 42 minutes over, that is quite a bit over. I know it's initially long, it's hybrid, new location, so it's complicated. So is there a, I'm going to be a second. Yeah, great, so here's where so far, overtime, I believe is at Chair's discretion, so I will adjourn the meeting at this time.